Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm Chairperson Jerry Robinson. Is it on?
Jerry, you may want to use the gallows a little.
Okay.
Just pour it out.
Did I shift the table?
Yeah.
A couple of times, Jerry.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm Chairperson Jerry Robinson. The committee just returned from an executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, with respect to the committee's role in collective bargaining between its contractor, TransDev, and the United Steelworkers Local 8751 for a successor collective bargaining agreement. A report on this matter will be provided later in the meeting. The committee also received a brief update on the BTU contract negotiations. I want to welcome everyone who is joining us tonight in person, on Boston City TV, and on Zoom. I'm going to ask everyone here in the chamber to please turn off the volume on your laptops or other devices so it does not interfere with the audio for tonight's meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. Tonight's meeting documents are posted on the committee's webpage, bostonpublicschools.org/schoolcommittee, under the December 4th meeting link. For those joining us in person, you can access the meeting documents by scanning the QR code that's posted by the doors. The meeting documents have been translated into all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The meeting will be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and posted on the school committee's webpage and on YouTube. The committee is pleased to offer live simultaneous interpretation, virtually in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cape Verdean, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. The Zoom interpretation features have been activated. Zoom participants should click the globe icon at the bottom of your screen to select your language preference. I'd like to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Before we begin this meeting, before we began this morning, I had the privilege of joining Superintendent Skipper, Mayor Michelle Wu, and Governor Mauro Healy at a truly special event where Louisa Sparrow, a fifth and sixth grade special education teacher at the Perry School in South Boston, was announced as the 2025 Massachusetts Teacher of the Year. It was such a heartwarming, inspiring moment celebrating the incredible dedication and passion of educators who make a lasting impact in our communities. We'll begin the meeting with the approval of minutes. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the November 6, 2024, meeting and the November 20, 2024, retreat. Is there a motion?
So move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. This evening, there will not be a superintendent's report. As a result of the collective work during our retreat, we are beginning adapting in how we build our meeting agendas. We look forward to the superintendent's report in a future meeting. We will now move on to general public comment. Ms. Parvex?
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, caregivers, students, and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered this time, but are referred to the superintendent for a later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. The meeting will feature two public comment periods, with the first comment period limited to one hour. Priority will be given to those testifying in person. Time permitting, the committee will then open it up for virtual testimony. After one hour, anyone who hasn't testified will have the opportunity to do so at the end of the meeting. We have 49 speakers this evening. Each person will have two minutes to speak, and I would remind you when you have 30 seconds remaining. If your remarks are longer than two minutes, please email your comments for distribution to the committee. The time that an interpreter uses for English interpretation will not be deducted from a speaker's allotted time. Speakers may not reassign their times to others. Please direct your comments to the chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. Please note the comments of any public speaker do not represent the Boston Public Schools, the Boston School Committee. Please state your name, affiliation, and what neighborhood you are from before you begin. We will begin this evening with our in-person speakers. Our first group of speakers are Jessica Tang, Eric Berg, Jess Ellis, Danielle West, and Michael McQuire. Jessica Tang?
Good evening, Superintendent Skipper, Chair Robinson, and members of the school committee. I do not. Thank you. It's okay. I hope that didn't count against my time. All right. My name is Jessica Tang, and I am here tonight both as a BTU member and president of AFT Massachusetts. And I'm speaking tonight in support of a fair contract for Boston educators, as well as Inclusion Done Right for our students. In my new role, I've had the opportunity to visit schools and districts all across the state. And nowhere in my travels have I come across a school or district trying to implement special education inclusion in the way that Boston has tried to over the last 10 years. And that's because it was poorly planned, and it doesn't really make sense. So two years ago, in our last contract, we had the opportunity to course correct and do this right. We agreed to an aspirational vision of how to collaboratively create inclusion plans that would ensure our students were getting the services they needed while ensuring the educators had a voice in those plans and got the support that they needed. Despite repeated statements during negotiations promising that it would be collaborative, not to be a repeat of the failed Schedule A planning teams, and fully funded because, quote, "We have to get this right," the district has fallen greatly short of the vision we had agreed to. It has not been honored or implemented, and it continues not to be done right. Instead, I continue to hear from our educators on the ground that the district continues to require dual or triple licensure while students with IEPs and ELLs are in overcrowded, understaffed classrooms that are not meeting their needs and/or not in the right placements while putting our educators in impossible situations. It's not fair to our students, and it's also causing burnout for educators and extreme job dissatisfaction that will inevitably lead to greater teacher shortages when they choose to leave our district. We have experienced highly skilled and dedicated educators in Boston, and we need to keep all of them. I understand that the current untenable situation has been made worse by DESI intervention and transitions that have made it difficult to implement with the fidelity that we wanted it to be. However, we need to have an agreement so that we can truly begin to course correct before further damage is done. Our students and educators deserve a fair contract now that will truly begin the overdue transformation of our classrooms to better serve all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Eric Berg, father of two BPS graduates, 25-year elementary teacher, and president of the BTU. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'd like to start with a quotation from an educator. "I love my job teaching in Boston in BPS, but short-staffing inclusive classrooms is shorting and sliding our students, your people, of the resources they need most. The correct staffing in these classrooms is... The current staffing in our classrooms is unsafe. If we can offer Inclusion Done Right, we can give our students the support they need and deserve to succeed." This is some context from one of the thousands of postcards our members wrote to Mayor Wu, and you will hear more compelling stories this evening. As you know, we've been at the negotiating table since February, and now that we have been working for 95 days without a contract, it is time to come to an agreement that meets the needs of our students and educators. First, the district's failed inclusion plan is not providing students with the services they need from the additional educator they deserve. We support fully-staffed inclusive classrooms that provide students with disabilities the opportunity to learn and thrive in the least restrictive environment. It is past time for Boston schools to join the schools in every other district in the state and ensure that the services required by IEPs in Boston are provided by a separate special education provider and not rely on classroom teachers. Second, you have heard in the past, and you will hear tonight, of the struggles that Boston educators face to make ends meet. The cost of food, heat, childcare, and services have gone up dramatically in the last several years, and the cost of housing in the Boston area is through the roof. Yet, starting pay for a classroom paraprofessional in many of Boston's schools is just under $30,000 annually. This is no way to treat these hard-working employees, most of whom are women of color and who form the backbone of our schools day in and day out. Don't make our educators, students, and families settle for less. Thank you. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jess Ellis. Jess Ellis?
As an early educator, I love stories. Many stories begin with a magical invocation, "Once upon a time", and end with thee comforting, and they all lived happily ever after. Sadly, our story begins with iceberg, right ahead! And we all know how that one ends. While beautiful on the surface, the danger of an iceberg is that all that's hidden below the surface. In this story, the ship is our schools, and rather than ice, the tip of the iceberg is good intentions, rushed decisions, and budget limitations. The hidden part of the iceberg is all the necessary work and planning, time, shifts in practice, preparation, collaboration, and staff it takes to truly be inclusive. The rollout of inclusion has been improperly planned and inadequately funded. Despite continual warnings and urgings from educators and families, we're still barreling headfirst into hasty implementation of inclusion. At the bargaining table, we advocate for Inclusion Done Right, for support, resources, time, and staff, but the district refuses to budge. By not staffing schools adequately, you are locking the steering wheel to a direct crash course. Inclusion Done Right is not telling schools in April they will get a new K0, K1 in September. It is not 12 hours PD on lesson internalization. It is not one teacher doing the job of three teachers simultaneously. Inclusion Done Right is having time to plan an intentional and gradual rollout to improve systems and routines and set a school up for success. And most importantly, Inclusion Done Right means having the staff needed to run an inclusive school so that all children can be safe, learn successfully, and thrive. My name is Jess Ellis. I'm a 19-year veteran of Boston Public Schools. So at this moment, school committee, I urge you, put on the brake, turn the wheel, do not let us hit the iceberg.
Next speaker is Danielle West.
Good evening, school committee. My name is Danielle West, and I've been a special education teacher in Boston for a decade. And I currently am a resource and inclusion room teacher at Brighton High, and I serve on the executive board at the BTU. I believe deeply in inclusion, and I helped to lead the work at The Curly and now at Brighton on creating inclusive schools. So let me set the scene. Imagine you're a parent, and your kid has an IEP. You go to their child's school open house to meet their teachers. You meet with their classroom teacher, and you ask how they're doing. They say they're doing great. And then you ask to meet with their special ed teacher, and that same teacher says, "Oh, that's also me." Would you be confused about how one person's doing both jobs? Because I would be. And that's what's happening every single day in our schools. And it makes no sense, and it wouldn't fly in any district around us or across the country. We're one of the only districts in this country that requires our educators to work under two licenses at the same time. And our students deserve so much better. Our families deserve better, and the future deserves better. Additionally, at Brighton, we have students in substantially separate programs who want to and are ready for inclusion opportunities. But they literally can't due to appropriate space, supports, and staffing. In a district that's touting inclusion as the air we breathe, students are being denied because of a lack of staffing and funding. We need to fund Inclusion Done Right, and we need to do it now because our students cannot wait. BPS, please don't make our educators and our students settle for less again in this contract like we did in our last contract. Thank you. Thank you.
I am Michael McGuire, West Roxbury’s my lair. I teach the Latin language with a seasoned flair. I’m dressed as the Grinch on this cold frosty night to tell you a tale of my fellow teacher’s plight. For many a year at Latin Academy I’ve taught, riches, oh no, those I never sought, but poverty’s vow I did not take, yet my spending power dwindles, for goodness sake. And what of the paraprofessionals? Can we not agree their work is worth far more than this city’s fee? They labor and toil with their hearts so grand, yet their pay a pittance. How can this stand? Substitute teachers? Oh, let’s have a chat. I began as one. Can you imagine that? Do you think these posts stay empty because they’re lavished with riches? No, and there’s no applause. Then there’s the district’s inclusion plan, an absolute mess. One teacher, two jobs, what a terrible stress. The students need more, the staff need aid, but the absurdity grows while progress is stayed. Even the Grinch once had a change of heart. It’s time for the school committee to do its part. A living wage in Boston, that would be a dream come true. Teachers, parents, and students, we’re all counting on you. Thank you.
The next speakers are John Mudd, Travis Marshall, Deidra Manning, Christopher Barton, and Karsten Frey. John Mudd?
No, I said defer to the teachers. They should have time.
Travis Marshall?
My name is Travis Marshall. I live in Rosendale. I’m a proud parent of students at The English High School and at the Bates Elementary School, which has been staffing inclusion right for 10 years, by the way. I’m also a member of Quality Schools for Every Student. I’m speaking tonight about the message Boston Public Schools sends to our students with regard to 7th and 9th grade assignment. For years, BPS policy has been to inform 6th and 8th graders about admissions to the three exam schools four to six weeks before other assignments are announced. This not only creates a period of uncertainty in classrooms where some students know their next school and others do not, but it also reinforces a hierarchy of value for our schools and our students. If a student ranks a non-exam school above an exam school, they are asked to accept or decline an exam school invitation before they ever find out if they have a seat at their preferred school. This assumption that the center of gravity revolves around exam schools continues. If a 7th or 8th grader is at a non-exam 7-12 school, BPS repeatedly reminds them about retaking the admissions tests and attending info sessions for the exam schools, but BPS never mass texts and emails about any other high schools, even ones that require special applications or auditions. Every district communication leads students and families to believe that there are only three high schools worth attending. Is it any wonder, then, that some of the 12,000 students at other high schools might think themselves less worthy?
30 seconds.
For all this body’s discussion of lesser chosen schools, it routinely ignores the way our assignment timeline and communication explicitly prods students towards three high-demand schools. This hierarchy of value is as evident in the disparate resources in our high schools as it is in our language about them. We have a long way to go in treating our high schools equally, but we can start with our messaging around them and with a uniform assignment date for all schools. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I’m a resident of Dorchester, a BPS parent since 2016, and the sole supporter of two minor public school children. We have heard the term unintended consequences surrounding the exam school policy mentioned by many, but the exclusion of primarily tier 7 and 8 students from consideration for exam school seats seemed to be planned. BPS simulations from 2020 and 2021 show that students who lived in these neighborhoods, and especially those who are penalized by not receiving bonus points, would not receive seats at these exam schools. Students who are assigned to BPS schools that do not qualify for bonus points and who live in tier 7 and 8 are doubly penalized. Students who attend BPS bonus point schools, like my daughter, who are essentially forced to leave due to disruptive learning environments, such as a principal being assaulted by a 16-year-old girl and knocked unconscious, are let down by BPS administrators a second time when they are excluded from consideration from exam schools. BPS administrators should make existing schools great for all Boston residents instead of driving families to charter, parochial, or private schools. Administrators and school committee members talk endlessly about declining enrollments and the need to merge or close schools. It should not be a novel concept to have families want to send their children to BPS. Instead, BPS holds families hostage to underperforming schools with bonus points and seeks to dismantle the successful high schools available to city residents. As an eight-year BPS parent, I have come to understand that BPS promises results but rarely delivers. I’ve had countless experiences where I was initially hopeful and then felt strung along as BPS administrators continued to make no progress before I realized nothing would change. School committee, please use your power you have to change this admission process and allocate seats based on a percentage of applicants per tier, rather than having a fourth year where the majority of applicants from tier 7 and 8 are rejected. Thank you.
Thank you. Christopher Barton?
My name is Chris Barton. I’ve been with the Boston Public Schools employees since 2003. I work within the ABA Strand classrooms as an ABA specialist at the Tynan Elementary School. I give my testimony tonight not only as a BPS employee, but also as a parent of a beautiful special needs child. I’ve come to speak about the district’s decision to increase the class size to 11 for the ABA Strand classrooms. Raising the class size to 11 for our ABA Strand classrooms is unfair to our students with special needs, and it is my hope that this decision will be reversed. ABA classrooms service special needs students who are primarily diagnosed with autism and are on IEPs. The student population within these ABA classrooms present unique challenges within our schools, our classrooms, and at their homes. They are our fellow community members. They are our neighbors. They are our loved ones. Whether as young people or as adults, their individual accomplishments and achievements directly enrich the greater community. We know this to be true. The services ABA specialists provide to our students are critical for the students’ growth and development and have a tremendous impact on their quality of life.
30 seconds.
When the class sizes increase, we cannot provide the same level of support, and it is our students that lose out. The result is student-teacher ratios become more challenging, caseloads become larger, student groupings are increased, and the quality of direct service is negatively affected. Lastly, people can get hurt. I ask for your help. It is my hope that the committee will influence the district to reverse this decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This one? Okay. Good evening. My name is Karsten Frey. I live in Brighton, and I’m a science teacher at Brighton High School. I bring the story of Ms. D., a classroom paraprofessional who works at Brighton High. Ms. D. would have brought it here herself, but she’s unable to attend this meeting. Right now, she’s at her second job. To say that classroom paras assist in the classroom doesn’t begin to describe their importance to our children’s education. Paras partner with teachers. Ms. D. works in the neighboring science classroom where cohorts of brilliant students with emotional disabilities learn each day. In this classroom, Ms. D. draws from IEPs to track the academic and behavior goals of 15 students at a time. She’s giving individualized attention to these students, knowing who needs help with reading, who needs help with organization, and who needs emotional support. She’s forming tight relationships with students and communicating with families. She’s knowing the science content. She’s following up with discipline, and, in short, she’s working in tandem with the teachers to make the classroom function and help the students thrive. Now imagine doing all that from 7:30 to 2:30, then shuttling immediately to work a second full-time shift from 3:00 to 11:00, as Ms. D. does four nights per week.
30 seconds.
Her student loans, renting in Boston, cost of groceries, and low parapay all but necessitate it. Ms. D. is striving to become a school counselor, but where does one find the time to search and apply for programs, let alone take classes between two full-time jobs? One job should be enough. A substantial number of Brighton High paras are alums of the school. It’s one gateway to building staffs that represent Boston’s neighborhoods, but ultimately, it can only be so if paras can afford to be paras.
Thank you. Time is up.
BPS, please don’t make our educators and students settle for less. Thank you.
Our next speakers are Laura Soto, who will need Spanish interpreter, Devin Clark, Shannon Wyman, and Megan Rider. Laura Soto?
Laura Soto is forfeiting her time for the Boston teacher.
Sorry?
Laura Soto is forfeiting her time for the Boston teacher.
Next speaker is Devin Clark.
I work as a paraprofessional at the Community Academy of Science and Health in Fields Corner, Boston, Massachusetts. I’ve been working in Boston for five years. I moved to this city because my entire life growing up in New England, I knew it was a city on the hill. It was the home of abolition. It was the home of the revolution. I visited with my family, and I saw a city in action. Now, I see a city in inaction. For the past three months, we have been without a contract. Us educators care deeply about this city. I live here even though I can barely afford it. This is my paycheck, $1,400. If I did not have a master’s in education, I would not be able to live here. I still spend a majority of this check every month on a one-room apartment with three other people, all of them educators. How is this sustainable? How? Are we going to be able to grow as a city, attract new families? They are charging half a million dollars for a condo down the street. It would take me decades to be able to afford that. Decades. Do you know what happens when people leave the city? The tax base gets smaller. School services get worse. All of this is a spiral that needs to be stopped. We want to serve the city, but that feeling does not feel mutual. When I signed up to be a para, I was excited to help our amazing teachers, but I was shocked when I saw my first check. I was getting paid for six hours a day, even though I am working in the school every day. According to the school district, I am essentially a part-time worker 30 hours a week. That’s news to me. And I ask you, my colleagues doing the same job as me, make $17 an hour. $17 an hour. You can take that check and you can cut it in half.
Your time is up.
Don’t let us settle for less, or the city won’t survive. Thank you.
I’m Shannon Wyman, physical education teacher at the Killmer K8. I’m sharing several experiences throughout our school day where our ELL students are left to navigate their school day unsupported due to the district’s plan for inclusion of multilingual learners. At our upper campus, ELD-1s are receiving ESL support for reading and writing in our 4th and 5th grade, and our ELA class in middle school. These students are then alone the rest of the day, meaning when a student attends math class, physical education, or even recess, they’re left unsupported. This is an injustice to both the students and teachers. It presents a message that these other parts of the day, which could be much better supported in an SEI setting, are unimportant. Additionally, when we get languages, like our new ELD student, ELD-2 student, who in 8th grade arrived mid-October and whose L1 language is Arabic, the ESL teacher is not given the time to teach her the American alphabet versus the Arabic Abjad alphabet. Our Chromebook keyboards don’t even have an Abjad alphabetic keyboard to translate, all while this teacher also has three Haitian Creole, two Spanish, and a Portuguese-speaking ELD-1 and 2 student in the same class. So, even our ESL support during ELA blocks is, simply put, triaging. I want to finish with my own experience of teaching a class of 1st graders for physical education without the support of a paraprofessional. First, students arrive outside on our blacktop space, as we have no gymnasium. This particular class has three L1s in three different languages. I have to take out my own cellphone, my own personal cellphone, and use Google Translate to explain rules of a game in three different languages. While the rest of the class is on their own, if one of these students has a question or concern, I then once again must stop the class to take out my phone and translate. PE is a great place for kids to learn and practice social and emotional skills, but this approach is instead causing them distress. Please, put yourself in the shoes of these students and teachers, both wanting the same thing and having a positive experience in BPS.
Megan Rider?
Good evening, members of the school committee. My name is Megan Rider. I live in Dorchester, and I’m a teacher at The Curly K8 in Jamaica Plain. I’m here to speak in support of the BTU’s contract demand for fair pay. This is important to me because housing costs in Boston are out of reach for most of our members, especially our paraprofessionals. We all deserve to be able to live in the city where we work. I’ve been working for BPS for six years, but have made the difficult decision to move out of Boston due to housing costs. I would not have ever thought of leaving Boston or BPS, but I want to realize my dream of buying my first house, and that is simply an unattainable goal here in the city, on my salary. I am sad to leave a school community I have been a part of for six years, a place where I have helped create a Spanish program and created a student government. I love my students, and I want to continue to educate them, but I cannot afford to live in the city in which I work anymore. BPS will continue to lose outstanding educators if fair pay is not addressed. Many of those educators will be paraprofessionals, who are the backbone of our schools, but are the lowest-paid workers. Boston School Committee, I urge you to meet the BTU’s demands for fair pay. It is time every BPS educator earns a living wage so they can live with dignity. BPS, please don’t make our educators and students settle for less. Thank you.
Next speakers are Samantha Laney, Nikolski Pione, Dan Goldsberry, and Denise Sonny. Samantha Laney?
My name is Samantha Laney, and I have been a teacher in Boston for seven years, and my job is near impossible in the best of circumstances, and the only thing that makes it possible is my team, very specifically the incredible paraprofessionals that I have had the honor of working with throughout my time in Boston Public Schools. These paras are of the highest quality, they are the hardest-working, and unfortunately the most deeply underappreciated. Are you aware that our highest-paid paraprofessional in Boston only makes about 50% of the AMI, meaning that they qualify for most low-income housing programs even if they are only a single adult? That means professional educators who have been working in BPS for over 12 years, hold a bachelor’s degree plus an additional 15 credits, and work in an extended day, cannot afford to live in the communities in which they teach, and that is unacceptable. There is a lot of talk about the hemorrhaging of teachers that is happening in this district in this country, but what we need to talk about is why they are leaving. What we need to talk about is the flight of paraprofessionals out of this profession. Paraprofessionals are often the sole support system in a classroom to the teachers that you are so desperately trying to retain. They are the primary contacts, they are the small-group facilitators, they are the crisis managers, tension relievers, they are the person who watches the class when teachers do something as essential as go to the bathroom. All the while, they have to work second and third jobs just to pay the bills, oftentimes while they are raising their own children in tandem with those they are assisting to raise in schools. I am a triple-licensed, master degree, 10-year teacher, and I would not be an educator I am a triple-licensed, master's degree, tenured teacher, and I would not be in education at all if it were not for my para-professional partners. Let me say this another way. If you are losing para-professionals, you are losing teachers. These issues are not divided. These professionals are not divided, and with that, I stand here in solidarity today with my coworkers and friends as we demand that para-professionals are valued, and let's not mince words, when I say valued, I mean paid what they are worth, and we will not settle for less. Thank you.
My name is Nicole Cipione, and I am a first-grade teacher at the Joyce Kilmer School. I am speaking today regarding the lack of support for our multilingual learners. In our general education classroom, we have six students who are considered ELLs. Three of these students are ELD-level 1s, each of which speaks a different native language. In order to communicate with these students and understand their basic needs in the classroom, I have to use a variety of translation applications. These students only receive 90 minutes of support from an ESL teacher. Therefore, for 330 minutes a day, I am left alone to do the impossible and support these students with a wide range of language needs, while simultaneously supporting 17 other students who also have language, social, emotional, and academic needs, along with IEPs and 504 plans. To better support our Level 1 students, we met with a rep from OM. The suggestions they provided were common Tier 1 supports that we already use daily in our classroom. These recommendations were not only insulting to our capabilities as educators, but a shocking reality that the district lacks vital resources to help their teachers and students. We must also address the social and emotional trauma we are inflicting on these students. Newcomers who have never been to school and who do not speak English are being placed in a classroom without the support they need to communicate with their teachers or peers. One of my students cried all day, every day, for four straight weeks. It was heartbreaking, and yet the district doesn't understand the hardships they are causing when they assign students to schools to simply fill seats and do not consider the unique learning needs of each child. Under my three licenses, it is assumed that I can support the needs of all learners, but that assumption is an injustice to these students. Next year, first grade will become full inclusion, meaning that the learning needs of our students will only become more diverse. If we do not address and support the needs of our learners with proper staffing in SEI classrooms, we are doing a disservice of the students and families we serve. We are often told as educators that teaching is our superpower. While meant as a compliment, that statement is toxic. We are not superheroes, we are not capable of doing the impossible, and the district should be ashamed that they are asking us to do so.
My name is Dan Goldsberry, and I'm a school counselor for grades 10 through 12 at the newly renamed Ruth Batson Academy in Dorchester. While my school is fortunate to have some amazing school counselors, there are dozens of BPS schools and tens of thousands of young people in the city who currently do not have access to this critical support. When we returned to in-person learning after the COVID-19 pandemic, BPS rightly decided to ensure that every BPS school had a social worker. Sadly, as of today, there are still dozens of BPS schools without a single school counselor. I've seen it with my own eyes. As a middle school counselor for 10 years, I can attest to the critical need for academic and social-emotional support in the middle grades. However, when BPS decided to close their middle schools, no additional counseling positions were added to the K-8 schools that absorbed many of these young people. According to data provided by the Boston Teachers Union, as of the end of the last school year, out of 25 K-8 schools in the city, only three had licensed school counselors. That means that more than 10,000 young people in this city do not have access to this critical support. As you may know, many schools in Boston, including mine, utilize multi-tiered systems of support, or MTSS. School counselors are considered a Tier 1 support because we are accessible to every student in the building. We are the first people students see when they arrive on their first day, and we're often the last person they see before they transition or graduate from our schools. Social workers are fantastic and very needed, but are mostly focused on students with the highest needs, which we refer to as Tier 2 or Tier 3 interventions. Since we returned from COVID in 2021, BPS has ensured there is a social worker in every school and there is a family liaison in every school.
Thank you. Your time is up.
It is long past time that the young people of Boston had a counselor in every school.
Thank you.
BPS, please do not make our educators and students settle for less.
Next speaker Denise, Denise Sonny.
My name is Denise Sonny, and I have taught in BPS for 25 years. I'm at the Nathan Hale Elementary School in Roxbury, Massachusetts. Tonight, I wanted to speak to you about the opportunity we have as we move forward with our inclusion implementation. Bringing almost all students into the general education classrooms is a step forward, as every child deserves the sense of belonging and a chance to learn alongside their peers. But for inclusion to truly work, it must be done with care, intention, and the right support. Schools have thoughtfully developed IPT plans to meet their students' needs, but many of these plans have been reconfigured by the district without negotiation or discussion with the IPT teams. Without proper staffing and resources, many students are not getting what they legally need or deserve at a significant number of schools in BPS. If we require our teachers to have multiple licenses under misguided thinking that this will meet the needs of students, we are ignoring reality. Teachers cannot provide individualized support as well as meet the needs of a whole class. As teachers cannot do the jobs of two people, we risk undermining a reasonable vision of inclusive education. Worse, we risk failing the very students we are striving to uplift. I know we all want the same thing, a system where every student can thrive, where teachers can feel empowered, and where inclusion isn't just an idea but a reality. Let's make sure that we're doing this right by giving our schools what they need to succeed. Thank you.
Next speakers are Mary Grady, Rochelle Bourguliant, Caitlin Gaffney, and Grace Kelly. Mary Grady.
My name is Mary Grady. I live in Dorchester. My children are former and current BPS students, as are my sisters and I, and my mother is a proud retired teacher. Anne Grady, yes. I teach ESL and history at Ruth Batson Academy, SEI history. This is my 25th year of teaching in BPS. All classes in my school are full inclusion except the SEI classes, which have ELD-1s and -2s. Our class size officially caps at 20, but we are over-enrolled in the eighth grade, so we have 21. In these classes, some students have special needs, including two who have autism. They get no special ed services for reasons that are unclear to me. It appears that the students with the greatest needs are in the largest classes with one teacher and no para-professional or co-teacher to support. It is impossible for me to effectively teach them all, and I told my principal that I feel like I teach in the Peace Corps. We teachers have requested the renewal of the Rosetta Stone subscriptions, which expired almost a year ago. This is one way we can teach students who have a range of English language skills. Another way is to have upperclassmen, namely former ESL students, one of whom is a junior and the other a senior, assisting classes as interns. These students are very helpful, patient, and caring with the middle school students, but the best solutions to meeting our students' needs will be to have two qualified adults in the classroom for students who are 1s and 2s. My former student, graduate of BCLA, is here tonight, Asheret, wonderful student. She's teaching adult English learners. She got into graduate school. Her future is bright in Boston public schools. I have been able to see students like Asheret go from ESL 2 to 3 and attend and graduate from college, some of them now teach in Boston. My son hopes to teach in BPS when he becomes a teacher after grad school.
Thank you. Your time is up.
So, for the sake of all of us, please do the right thing and give us the contract and the support that we need. Thank you.
My name is Rochelle Bourguliant, and this is my 11th year as a BPS educator. I work at the Blackstone. I started as a teacher in the Multiple Disabilities Program and then became the MD Strand Specialist. This year, I accepted a new position as a pre-K learning specialist. I applied for this position because I was excited to be a part of the shift happening at my school to become more inclusive. With my past experience and knowledge, I felt I could support teachers and students in our existing inclusion classrooms while also providing more inclusive opportunities for students in our sub-separate classrooms. The makeup at the Blackstone is as follows: three inclusion classrooms, one current SEI, two sub-separate center-based, and one sub-separate multiple disabilities classroom. In this new role, I plan to do my best, knowing the challenge of supporting several classrooms with diverse needs. I'd like to share with you now what I've learned these past few months. First off, to meet the needs of all students, including children on IEPs and children who are multilingual, BPS classrooms need a two educator co-top model. If that's not possible, we need one educator split between two classrooms. I'm currently split between three, and it's not working well. I'm not able to equitably support all the students who need my support. Most importantly, I can't provide enough inclusive opportunities for the students in our sub-separate classrooms.
Thirty seconds.
I'm not able to plan with my colleagues, as a co-teacher would, for effective instruction. I do my best, but it's not a model that's done right. It's disheartening that we know what needs to be done and are going about it wrong. If BPS truly wants to create more inclusive classrooms in schools, they need to start focusing on students and their unique needs. Stop making our students settle for less. BPS needs to fund staffing models that support academic learning, language development, and social-emotional needs of children. As a district, we also need to think about all the students, including those who are most segregated in our sub-separate classrooms. Thank you.
My name is Caitlin Gaffney, and I've had the privilege of being a teacher at the Tobin School in Mission Hill, Roxbury, for the last 25 years, and as a professor of education at Northeastern for nearly as many. I am here today with the means, speaking on behalf of many educators across the district. Our schools have inadequate safety protocols and training, especially for emergency situations. Educators have highlighted the need for comprehensive safety plans, better communication systems during emergencies, and proper training to handle violent situations and diverse student needs. These protocols should include responses for students that are involved and impacted, families, the whole school community, and staff. This does not always happen, and when we express our genuine concern for the well-being of students and staff, we have been ignored, gaslit, and even blamed. This has resulted in a toxic workplace. The district has circulars related to safety in place, but they are not adhered to with fidelity and have inconsistent implementation that places students and educators at risk. We are not tracking or accurately reporting incidents of violence that are occurring in our schools on a daily basis, and this suppression of data and information has led to a false narrative around the level of need. If we are honest about the daily crises mental health needs and social-emotional support required, we would own that we are falling short of what students deserve. Educators are working doggedly, day in and day out, to triage these needs, and we know what we need. At the Tobin, we need a full-time school psychologist to counsel students. We need a health teacher so students don't go from K to 8 without learning vital developmental information. We need enrichment in our latestart ELT school, where students do not have access to enough creative pursuits but have to wait in the dock for buses that don't arrive until after 6:00 PM some nights. We need more special education to provision the legal services required on students' IEPs. We need training and system-wide full implementation of restorative justice so that we can offer students more than punitive measures we know are not the primary way to shift behavior. If you cared about school safety, you would make sure that doors lock, windows open, close, shades could be pulled down during containment.
Thank you.
If you cared about school safety, you would have a clear protocol for educators to follow when they're injured on the job, as they are daily. If you cared about school safety, you ensure that students who are at risk have some protections put in place rather than safety plans that are not being adhered to. If you cared about safety, you'd listen to educators, students, and families. Please don't make our educators and students settle for less. We're going to pass out our report to each of you so you can learn more about what we're fighting for and why.
My name is Grace Kelly. I'm a current resident of Boston and a K-2 first-grade ABA classroom teacher at the Joseph Lee School. I am here to speak in support of BTU's contract demand to cap the ABA strand classes at 10 students staffed by one teacher and two para-professionals. Since August, I have had firsthand experience of the egregious decision to increase class sizes for our most vulnerable students. This staffing ratio has had detrimental impacts on student progress, safety, and the overall climate of our rooms. For a moment, I want you to envision what my classroom looks like. You have 11 students with two paras. Nine of these students need one-to-one support with toileting. Seven of them need direct instruction on how to navigate their AAC technology to communicate. Five of them frequently engage in behaviors directed at themselves or others, including biting, kicking, hitting, pinching, and climbing. Five students engage in bolting outside of the classroom or away from class staff on a daily basis. Eight of these students require individualized assistance to transition around the school building safely. The majority of my students require one-to-one explicit instruction to acquire new skills. The remaining students are able to access small-group instruction and adapt a general education curriculum, but often miss out due to staffing shortages. When staff goes on break, there are no additional coverage for step-in for them. We are forced to adapt our day and the environment to focus on safety rather than learning. This is not representative of a world-class innovative school, as BPS claims all their schools to be. It is evident that those who believe our ABA class sizes should increase have not spent time in one of our classrooms. Surely, these are not the classrooms that you would send your loved ones to. I invite the school committee to come to an ABA classroom with 11 students, two paras, and one teacher. You'll be able to see firsthand how unsafe and unproductive this staffing ratio is. In conclusion, I urge you to meet the BTU's demands to keep ABA class sizes capped at 10 students with one teacher and two paras. Create new classrooms and reallocate students in classrooms that currently exceed these numbers. BPS, don't make our educators and students settle for less. Thank you.
Next speakers are Nicole Parker-Monden, Michael Sweeney, Allison Rigney, and Claude James. Nicole Parker-Monden.
My name is Nicole Parker-Monden. I am not only a United States Army veteran, but also an educator who has proudly served the city of Boston for over 20 years. Currently, I work as a para-professional. I will soon be transitioned out of my role as a surround care specialist in 2025 through no fault of my own, because my school, our school, the Weststone Early Learning Center, will soon be closed. I represent two sides of this educational experience. In addition to being a teacher in early education, I am a proud parent of two children who have attended Boston Public Schools: Haynes Early Learning Center, Blackstone Elementary, The Gru, The Channing, The Mary Lion, and The Upper. I have witnessed firsthand the challenges faced by educators as they worked tirelessly through time, excuse me, times of leadership changes and staff turnover. These educators remain dedicated and providing healthy learning environments for all our students despite the challenges they face. In order to make inclusion work, the children committee, excuse me, the school committee and BPS leadership need to listen to those of us who are doing our hardest work. We are on the front lines, day in and day out. We can't, we can't just throw children in the classroom. They need to be, or need to have sufficient number of educators for all of us. Sorry. Come on, come on, come on, come on. We need to be respectfully compensated. Right now, our para-professionals are being treated like they're expendable. We step in and fill gaps the teachers are needed elsewhere, and the decisions are made that impact the bottom line, and we are overlooked, overworked, and, excuse me, under. And we are overlooked, overworked, and, oh, and, excuse me, undervalued.
Thank you.
In conclusion, I come from a long line of military personnel, educators, medical professionals, and when I was asked by my superiors, what I wanted to be when I grew up, it was an educator.
Michael, Michael Sweeney? Michael Sweeney?
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Mike Sweeney and I'm a proud BPS school psychologist at English High School. I am deeply concerned about the critical state of our special education evaluations in our district. These evaluations are not just legal requirements from the federal government. They're lifelines for students with disabilities, ensuring they receive the support they need to thrive. School psychs play an indispensable role in the process. They conduct comprehensive assessments, interpret complex data, and collaborate with educators and families to craft interventions tailored to each student's unique needs. But not only do we do evaluations, we complete risk assessments, implement RTI, lead counseling groups, respond to crises, and attend meetings, the list goes on. The loss of nine psychologists, dropping from 100, dropping to 100 from 109, puts this entire system at risk. Without adequate staffing, evaluations are delayed, leaving students and families in limbo, waiting longer for specialized instruction, specialized instruction and services that are their given right. We, as a department, are feeling the pressure and the dam is about to break. These delays could result not only in significant setbacks for our students, academic and emotional development, but also legal and financial consequences for this district. Most federal law dictates that when an evaluation form is, consent form is signed, we, as psychs, have 30 days to complete that evaluation. We are pushing that limit.
30 seconds.
These delays, most importantly, they represent a profound disservice to the students and families who rely on us to prioritize their needs and uphold our commitment to an equitable and high caliber education. This issue is urgent. BPS students and staff cannot settle for less. Thank you.
Allison Rigney?
Good evening, school committee members. My name is Allison Rigney and I'm a history teacher at another course to college in Hyde Park. We are a small, full-inclusion school of only 250 students, which allows students and staff to build strong and supportive relationships. Over the past few years, our number of students with IEPs has continued to grow to over 40% of our population. My students are brilliant and capable, but they are not getting the support they need to excel and thrive with BPS's current inclusion model. To reach their full potential, our students need inclusion done right. My largest class this year is 24 students, 12 of whom have IEPs and four of whom are multilingual learners, including an ELD-1. Although I am licensed in history, moderate disabilities, and English as a second language, I cannot replace the capabilities of multiple educators in a classroom. I can spend hours differentiating, scaffolding, and structuring my lessons so all of my students can access content, but I cannot provide the individualized support that so many students need. In a scenario like this, no one wins. Teachers end up burnt out and students can become frustrated and disengaged because there is not enough support to meet their needs. No other district uses teachers with multiple licenses to replace another adult in the classroom. The outcome of this policy is harmful for teachers, students, and our community. BPS needs to stop leaving learners behind and move towards inclusion done right. This means ending the practice of mandating a single educator meet all IEPs and multilingual learner needs while simultaneously delivering general education instruction in the same classroom. BPS, please don't make our educators and students settle for less.
Claude James?
My name is Claude James and I'm an ABA specialist at Fenway High School. Before this, I was a paraprofessional at Madison Park. I've been in BPS for five years. In these remarks, I'm representing thousands of other paras in Boston Public Schools. Unfortunately, because of low wages and challenging work conditions, paras have to make a hard decision each year to, sorry, each year of whether they can continue working with their students that they love or do they have to leave and disrupt the routine and relationships that their students need. Paraprofessionals play an essential role in student development and the ability for our school buildings to run smoothly. It's the time that they are valued and many paras are with their students from the time they get off the bus until the time they get back on the bus, stay with their students after school, serve as contacts for families, and as a result, often understand the most about their students' quirks and unique needs. Even with all of this, paraprofessionals are undervalued and underpaid. Our educators deserve fair pay. Our educators deserve to be valued greater as a district. Our educators deserve to live in the communities they serve. Boston is one of the most expensive cities to live in and the district's proposed 2% wage increase does little to ease the financial strain on our members. Our BTU is fighting for a fair contract, including better pay for our lowest-paid workers. While BTU and BPS have made progress in negotiations, key issues remain unresolved. BPS stalled talks citing disagreements over top priorities, special education inclusion, reasonable caseloads for mental health professionals, and fair wages for our lowest-paid staff. BPS, please don't make our educators and students settle for less.
Next speakers are Rebecca Knight, Jilly Santos, Giovanni Burgos, and Sadie Jasmine. Rebecca Knight?
Hello, my name is Rebecca Knight and my two kids attend the Elliott and Boston Latin. My testimony tonight is about the exam school policy that unfairly excludes many bright, hard-working, BPS-educated kids, including my now 8th grade daughter who do not receive bonus points added to their raw scores. Schools who, kids who attend the handful of BPS schools that don't award bonus points are at a severe disadvantage for exam school admission, despite last fall's minor adjustment. These kids had their first shot at an exam school two years ago when they were in 6th grade. That year, the vast majority of BPS kids got 10 points added to their scores. That year, kids in Tier 7, where we lived, needed scores above 100 to get into Boston Latin, which was impossible for non-bonus point kids. That year, kids with scores in the high 90s, including mine, were shut out of any exam school. Now, these non-bonus point kids have one last shot for high school and I have very little hope. For example, based on your data and tier map, we are now in Tier 6, in the exact same apartment. Students needed a score of 100 to get into BLS. Most kids in Tier 6 got eight bonus points. This period has been agonizing for my family as we navigate what my daughter's high school future will look like. I have many questions for what lies ahead and I have some for this committee too. Why do you feel it's appropriate to exclude kids from exam schools based on where BPS assigned them to go to school when they were four years old? Why do you feel it's acceptable to award bonus points meant to level the playing field to higher-income kids who attend poorer schools while shutting out economically disadvantaged kids who attend non-Titel 1 schools? How can you justify a tier map so crudely drawn and ever-changing that kids who live in multimillion-dollar brownstones are in Tier 1 while across-the-street neighbors are placed in vastly different tiers? As I mentioned, I'm in Tier 6, but across the street is Tier 2. These questions weigh heavily on my mind and I implore this committee to reconsider the current policy. Thank you.
Jilly Santos?
Good evening, members of the school committee. My name is Jilly Santos and I work with Citizens for Juvenile Justice, the only independent statewide nonprofit working exclusively to reimagine the juvenile justice and other youth-serving systems, including our schools in Massachusetts. We've submitted a written testimony as well, but wanted to show our solidarity with the Boston Teachers Union and voice our support for their contract priority to expand restorative justice in Boston Public Schools. Restorative justice improves school climate and safety. Restorative practices allow for a proactive approach to student behavior and provide opportunities to intervene after a conflict has occurred, seeking to heal the harm caused in a way that prevents future incidents. Restorative practices have been linked to reductions in school exclusion and law enforcement referrals and to improved student attendance, grades, and graduation rates. Boston Public Schools has made progress in recent years in implementing restorative justice through the hiring of restorative practices, safe and welcoming school specialists. However, we agree strongly with the BTU and numerous community partners that this is just a start and there is a need to build upon this positive step through hiring additional specialists and ensuring that those specialists are able to focus exclusively on building a restorative culture in our schools. BPS should codify these positions in district policy, making it clear that restorative justice practices are fundamental to the district's approach to school climate and safety. BPS must also enhance training opportunities for educators and school staff through ongoing professional development that ensures that year after year, adults in each school building have a grounding in restorative principles. Lastly, CFJJ strongly encourages codifying the collection and sharing of data on restorative practices, establishing evaluation metrics to ensure that the model is being implemented equitably and with fidelity at all times. It is critical to divine and measure success through data that is available to this committee and the BPS community so that community feedback can be incorporated and needed changes can be made. We strongly request that this committee show this commitment not just through policy implementation, but through the funding needed to faithfully implement restorative practices in every school in the district with a priority on schools that are experiencing the most challenges with student behaviors. Thank you and I ask you to deeply consider our written testimony.
Giovanni Burgos? Giovanni Burgos?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Giovanni Burgos. I am the vice president for the Monitor Union. And she's the president, so I'm gonna give her my two minutes and she gonna use her two minutes, so we have something to let you guys know. Thank you.
Okay, good evening. My name is Sadie Jasmine. I am the president of the Bus Monitor Local 2936. I live in Dorchester. I'm also a bus monitor and has been one since 1999. Being a bus monitor is not an easy job. Now, we are making $19.76 an hour. To make 40 hours, you have to start at 5:00 AM to 10:00 AM and 1:00 PM to 6:00 PM in order to make overtime. Finishing, to bring a decent paycheck for two weeks, we are city workers, but to make the least money, we make transportation, but we get no benefits, no respect. Monitors are being hired and not getting properly trained. What they call training is more like an orientation. We have more monitors on administrative suspension than we have on buses. We have a large cultural, diverse students population, riding buses, and we are the first defense in our safety for students to and from school and we also prepare them for the day in school to deal with the paras and the teachers. Write incident reports and understanding is efficiently what our students need to get through their day. We are the first people serving students in the morning and we set a place for a good day in school.
Your time is up.
Secondly, secondly, at the end of the day, monitors who are not properly trained for the position are being put on administrative leave for neglect charges, et cetera, of parents and schools complaint resulting disciplinary action and termination. COVID place, a COVID workplace restriction are over, but Boston Public Schools' cab bus monitors are still outside sitting in a tent with no heat and rats running in and out of tents when awaiting to work to transport students to and from school. The work environment is causing monitors to pass away from sitting outside in the cold from 4:30 AM to 4:30 PM in a tent and not being able to afford health insurance at the pay rate of $19.76 an hour from $27.97 an hour one year ago. The Transportation Department is not providing monitors for each one-to-one student. We are being forced to monitor regular monitor required students plus one or maybe two one-to-one student on a bus. BPS pay private transportation vendors monitors $25 an hour for transporting one student that live in Boston to their school that are Boston and monitor have only one-to-one, each vendor, each route. Monitors are not being trained, supervisors are not explaining to the monitors what students need and which is causing schools and parents to file 51As on monitors because we are not trained properly. I have much more I could tell, but to understanding, this is a hearing and I will send an email. And thank you for listening to my concern.
There, that concludes our first hour of testimony. The remaining speakers will have an opportunity to testify at the end of the meeting.
Thank you. We're gonna take a 10-minute break and come back.
All right.
Our first action item this evening is the grants for approval totaling $52,654,772. Now I'd like to turn it over to the superintendent for any final comments.
Thank you Chair. There's 10 grants being presented tonight, as the chair said, totaling[122.36][122.36]$52.65 million. The largest part of this package are our four main entitlement grants, which we call Title I, II, III, and IV. Each spring, the school committee votes to allow the district to start spending for these grants, and then each fall, we bring them back to the school committee for final approval. The bulk of tonight's package is Title I, Parts A and B, which is a grant for totaling $43 million. These two parts of the Title I provide funds to schools, districts, and schools with high numbers or high percentages of children who are disadvantaged to support a variety of services. It ensures that all children have a fair, equal, and significant opportunity to obtain a high-quality education and reach at a minimum proficiency on challenging state academic achievement standards and assessments. A smaller portion will support supplemental resources to school districts to support teaching and learning, and funds to support multilingual learners to become fluent in English. This funding will also support student achievement, I'm sorry, enrichment and re-engagement opportunities particularly for high school students, including counseling, mentorship, and employment. The remaining nearly $1.6 million of tonight's grant package represents grant support in the areas of behavioral health services, extended learning opportunities, professional learning, attendance initiatives, and career and tech education. At this time, I'd like to turn to Chief Financial Officer David Bloom, who's here to answer any questions the committee may have on the grants package.
Yep, thank you. Can I welcome your questions?
May I just ask one quickly?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thanks. Mr. Bloom, could you just help us out with difference between the actual amount now that we have it, you know, from the Fed then from the state versus what had been estimated in, in the budgetary presentations?
Yeah, so each spring, we tend to estimate our entitlement grants as flat. We consult with the Council of Great City Schools and other organizations to make sure that anything that, you know, is changing about that, that we do those estimates correctly. This year, the total difference between all four of our entitlement grants was just over $100,000 net, but there was some variation within each grant.
I'm sorry, difference between what you estimated and what the actual was?
Yes, so we estimated just, just shy of $50 million between the four grants, and we were within about $100,000 of that.
More or less?
Yeah, it was a little bit higher than what we projected. Title I came in about $120,000 higher, and Title IV actually came in significantly higher, $311,000 higher, which is about 10% increase in Title IV.
So on a $52 million total for the four, you had your estimate within $100,000 net, and it was on the conservative side?
Yes. Not bad.
That's pretty darn impressive, sir.
Yeah, we were a little bit, yeah, so sort of Title II came in a bit under, Title III came in a bit under. And basically what we do, because there was sort of, one grant was up $100,000, one grant was down $300,000, another was up $200,000, is we basically look for ways to rebalance across grants. We have eligible expenses on the general fund that we can swap back and forth. So Title II, which came in 8% or $240,000 below, that meant we had to cover some of those planned professional development expenses with general funds. But since Title IV came in $311,000 above, we had some new programming we had already been planning to spend general funds on that were Title IV eligible, so we used Title IV for that. So as a result, sort of net, we got, we have $100,000 of sort of new stuff we can do, which is great.
On the general fund side?
On the, right, essentially now, because of these grants netting out positive. So that's, you know, good news for us, and we'll, we'll spend that $100,000, I promise. But in terms of the actual impact on day-to-day programming, very minimal because the changes were sort of so close.
Because it's pretty much exactly as you predicted, which is based on the census, right? It's all, it's the formula.
Yes, yeah. And, and Title I is the largest, it's the significant majority of it, and that one is much more predictable year-to-year because it is based on our low-income counts, which have been pretty stable for the last few years.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I have two quick questions. I'm just curious about the Indian Education Formula Grant, because it says it would serve up to 1,400 students. Is, do we have 1,400 Native American students in our district, or how does that work?
We don't have that number. I think it's up to.
It says it's district-wide, so I'm not sure.
Yes, I, I'll have to double-check where that 1,400 came from.
Because I was going to ask this for a specific grade, and that's why the number's so small, or I think it's small, but yeah.
Yes, I think it's, you know, it's, it would be a formulaic grant. It's a federal grant. It's basically a grant that passes through the state to us, so the state has our enrollment information, and they sort of told us, okay, this is what you're eligible for, which would only be sort of $4,000. So I can get you that information, Chair.
Okay. I was just, I was just curious about.
Yes, it seems, I imagine it's a little bit different than that.
Can I add to the chair's question if, if it's for a specific grade level? Because it just, I know on the summary and just the overview, it doesn't like speak specifically like, who are the students? Like, how are we, is it like sixth graders, 12th graders? Just curious. But your, your explanation about the 1,400 doesn't make it clear why.
I can get a more detailed summary for the committee.
And my other question was about, I'm, I'm reading it from the summary that's in the, that we got around the Title II Part A grant, and part of the outcomes talked about increased the number of teachers, principals, and school leaders who are effective in improving student academic achievement in schools. And I guess the question is, how are we evaluating that?
Pull up the Title II.
Actually, that whole piece is all about teacher, basically, and it's what, $2,656,000?
Yeah, so these funds pay for a number of our professional development initiatives. So I think, you know, we're measuring, I think, attendance at those initiatives and looking at to identify specific schools that need that sort of targeted professional development work.
Yeah, I mean, these, the federal grants have, generally have tight rubrics that we then respond to. So there's particular questions, and, you know, some of this is going to be the number of students served in X types of schools with leaders X number of years. So they have kind of a rubric of student outcome that they want attached to it, which we can share.
Okay. That's it for me. Any other questions?
One more is on.
All right.
Sure.
Quick question on the focus areas for the Innovation Pathways Implementation and Support Grant. I was just wondering how and what schools these pa, these pathways are being implemented, and like, what specifically what, specifically what type of pathways that are being provided to the students?
So the pathways are going into, so Dearborn STEM, the Holland School of Technology, Brighton High School, and Excel.
These particular categories of innovation pathways that the state has sort of sanctioned. And so we have certain high schools that offer that particular pathway, and so this is to develop the pathway out and to help kind of get it sustained. So they, it comes from the state as to which innovation pathways they'll support. A lot of it is based in technology.
I don't know my interpreter here, but I'm trying English. Patient for me, please. In the, my question is the Title I, the money, the Title I Part A and D, right? They say, de, en el año fiscal 2025, 2025.
Fiscal year.
Yeah, 42,925, 42, 42 millones, 925,206.
What is the pregunta?
La pregunta de esta cantidad de dinero, yo estoy viendo que dice que va a ser, el, el área de enfoque será oportunidades para estudiantes y participación familiar, y dice que va a ser en todo el distrito.
The three million?
Sí, que este dinero va a ser alocado para estudiantes, para oportunidad para estudiantes y participación familiar.
Like the 3,161, so that's for the whole district, for the, for the readiness, social, emotional wellness?
Exactly.
¿Cuál es la pregunta?
Eh, la pregunta es cómo, cómo van, cómo van alocar cada escuela va a tener.
How is it going to be allocated to each school? It says it's district-wide, so how is it going to?
Tomando en cuenta que es el título uno, el dinero del título uno.
Yes, so the Title IV funding, which I believe is what you were referring to.
No, it's Title I.
Title I?
Title I Part A and D.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Part A and D.
The, we have a per-student allocation based on the number of low-income students that the, the state gives us a number per school, that they use our Aspen data to sort of match the data, and then we allocate a dollar per pupil to those schools. I think it was $583. I'll, I can double-check that exact number. So they then get those funds, and they set up sort of the budgets for that. And then we also guarantee that at least 1% of the money is going specifically for family engagement. So each school builds a family engagement budget based on their specific allocation. And then the other thing we do is each school reserves a percentage of the funding that is equal to the percentage of English learners in the building to support those English learners specifically.
Para English learner, right?
Yeah.
Oh, awesome. That's a good one. Y de quién, cómo van ustedes a monitorear que este dinero se use específicamente para English learning en cada escuela?
So my question is, how is it that you guys are going to monitor that this money will be allocated for that particular population appropriately?
So what we do is, so there's a coordinator in, in my office who works between my office and the Office of Multilingual Multicultural Education. Every school has to submit a plan to her for approval for how they're going to spend their allocation. So we determine the amount they have to spend. They then submit a plan, and then over the course of the year, we monitor their spending against the plan. And at the end of the year, they have to submit a sort of summary of the, what their spending was on.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course.
Any more? Any other questions? Thank you. If there are no further questions, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the grants as presented. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion, objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the grants are approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our first presentation will cover the tentative collective bargaining agreements between Transdev and the United Steelworkers Local 8751. I now invite Executive Director of Transportation, Dan Rosengard, to step forward and present. As he gets settled, I'd like to invite the superintendent to offer opening remarks and reminder to our presenters to speak slowly to assist our interpreters.
Thank you, Chair. So tonight, we'll ask the school committee to take action on three items regarding the Bus Drivers Union at the next meeting on Wednesday, December 18. In their role as the current school bus vendor for the BPS, Transdev employs school bus drivers who are members of the United Steelworkers Local 8751 Union. Under the contract between Boston Public Schools and Transdev, Transdev is reimbursed for all unionized personnel wages and fringe benefit costs as approved by the city and payroll taxes. On November 2, Transdev and the School Bus Drivers Union reached agreement on a successor collective bargaining agreement for a four-year contract through FY '28. The agreement was ratified on November 15. We are asking the committee to request an FY '25 supplemental appropriation from the Boston City Council in the amount of $6.6 million to support the cost of this contract. In addition, we are asking members to approve two side letters of agreement between BPS, the City of Boston, and the School Bus Drivers Union, United Steelworkers Local 8751. These letters are continuations of letters that are currently in effect and have been shared for your consideration. The first letter specifies that BPS would include in any new bus, school bus vendor procurement, a specification that the current School Bus Drivers Union would continue to be employed by any new vendor under the same collective bargaining agreement. The second letter states that if the city or school committee provides school bus services with its own employees rather than through a vendor, the city and BPS would continue to employ the current School Bus Drivers Union under the same collective bargaining agreement. In both letters, the union agrees to no strikes, work stoppages, or slowdowns through June 30 of 2029, one year past the expiration of the collective bargaining agreements. The school committee members have been updated on the recent agreement and its financial impact, the side letters of agreement, and the actions requested of the school committee. This is outlined in a memo that was shared with you prior to this meeting. The memo is also posted publicly on the school committee's website. With us tonight, BPS Executive Director of Transportation, Dan Rosengard, and Deputy Director Jackie Hayes. They're here tonight. They'll share additional information, and they're here to answer any questions. So with that, turn it over to the both of you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Again, my name is Dan Rosengard, Executive Director of Transportation, joined here by Deputy Director Jackie Hayes. So as the superintendent said, tonight, we'll ask the school committee to take action on three items regarding the, the School Bus Drivers Union contract at the next meeting on Wednesday, December 18. Again, just to reiterate, the superintendent, Transdev, who's our current bus vendor, employs school bus drivers who are members of the United Steelworkers Local 8751 Union, and under the contract between BPS and Transdev, BPS reimburses Transdev for all uni, all unionized personnel wages and fringe benefits as well as payroll taxes. And so the, you know, the wages and benefits under this contract, the CBA between Transdev and the school bus drivers would be reimbursable to BPS. The previous collective bargaining agreement between Transdev and the bus drivers expired on June 30 of this year, and after more than six months of negotiations, on November 2, Transdev and the Bus Drivers Union reached agreement on a successor collective bargaining agreement. That agreement was ratified on November 15, and each of the components of that contract that have a financial impact on BPS was approved by BPS Transportation and BPS Finance prior to the proposals being made. Again, a memo was shared with the school committee prior to this presentation, which details the components of the, the agreement between Transdev and the Bus Drivers Union and their financial impact on BPS. And just to summarize quickly, the highlights of that agreement include the following. First, it is a four-year deal through June 30 of 2028. This provides us with additional stability compared to a three-year agreement, which is typically what we've had in the past, which again, provides us with that stability and time as we continue working to implement reforms and improvements across all aspects of our operation. Second, the, the contract includes a market wage adjustment in the first year. While Transdev has introduced new CDL training opportunities and hiring pipelines over the past several years, and we and Boston have been fully staffed with bus drivers, we know that bus driver and transportation provider staffing shortages remain a significant challenge in many school districts, both in our state and nationwide. And this wage adjustment ensures that Boston will continue to offer a competitive market rate so that we don't fall behind and we can continue to attract and return, attract and retain drivers to stay fully staffed. And third, the contract agreement increases the guaranteed minimum weekly hours that drivers receive from 31 hours per week to 35 hours per week upon adoption of language by the parties about work as directed with work protections. And this work as directed will provide us with additional operational flexibility and capacity, for instance, to cover athletics trips and field trips that are not covered through existing driver selection and daily standby bid assignment processes. And as, as we all know, athletics transportation coverage has been a challenge at times. You know, although we have covered more than 96% of athletics trips so far this fall, every time that an athletics trip does not get covered, that has a really significant negative impact on the teams and the student athletes. And this component of the contract should help us to address that challenge going forward. So again, tonight, we're asking the school committee to take action on three items at the next meeting. First, we're asking the school committee to approve two side letters of agreement between BPS, the City of Boston, and the Bus Drivers Union, United Steelworkers Local 8751. These letters, again, are continuations of letters that are currently in effect and have been shared with the school committee for your consideration. The first letter specifies that BPS would include in any new school bus vendor procurement, a specification that the current Bus Drivers Union would continue to be employed by any new vendor under the same collective bargaining agreement. And the second letter states that if the city or school committee were to provide school bus services with its own employees rather than through a vendor, the city and, and BPS would continue to employ under the same collective bargaining agreement the current School Bus Drivers Union. In both letters, the union agrees to no strikes, no work stoppages, or slowdowns through June 30, 2029, which is one year past the expiration of the collective bargaining agreement that they just agreed to with Transdev. And then lastly, we're asking the school committee to request an FY '25 supplemental appropriation from the Boston City Council in the amount of $6.6 million to support the increased FY '25 costs associated with the new contract. So thank you, and we're happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Rosengard. I'll now open it up to questions from members.
I'll just quickly say, this is an important deal to get done, and thank you. I love that it's four years. Love that it's market rate for the drivers so we can remain fully staffed, because when we've had shortages in the past, it has really impacted. And particularly appreciate you calling out flexibility that you feel it gives about taking care of our athletic teams and field trips and students that are traveling outside of the regular. Do you think it will have any impact on the regular performance of buses as well, or is fully staffed the, you know, the most important component to improving the regular daytime transportation?
Yep. No, I, I think, I think it will help us to continue to improve operations. I think the four years, you know, in a number of ways, is really important here. One of the, the key ways is it gives us that, that runway and that, you know, stability and flex over the next few years. You know, we got a roadmap from the Council of Great City Schools, I guess about a year and a half ago now, for a, you know, a whole menu of systemic reforms that need to be implemented in transportation. We've made really significant progress on that, but having the stability now of knowing both our bus vendor contract and the School Bus Drivers Union contract over the next four years will allow us that, that stability to, you know, make sure that we have the time to implement some of these other reforms. So I think that's one area. And then I do think that the work as directed, you know, in, as well, you know, there's flexibility with athletics, with field trips, also, you know, other areas of just normal operations, whether it's, you know, backup buses or covering buses that need to be sent. Having that, that just increased flexibility in our operation will be helpful.
Thank you for focusing. Oh, I'm sorry. Please go ahead. No, no, go ahead.
I was just going to add that the, the benefit of being able to recruit and then retain drivers is incredibly important, too. We invest tremendously in the training of our drivers, and we're increasing that investment. So being able to make that investment and then see that investment pay dividends back does improve operations long-term, especially as we're rolling out new technologies. We really hope the drivers that are driving for Boston stay with Boston and continue improving how they operate every day on the road.
Thank you. And thank you for particular, for hearing what we had heard as a committee often about the concerns about the athletic teams. As you said, 96% of the time, 96% of the trips being covered, but that 4% creates such havoc for our student athletes. So really glad that you've figured out how to help incorporate in that contract. Thank you for your work.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you all, and the committee looks forward to taking action on this request at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Our next report is the Human Resources Update. I now invite Chief of Human Resources, Frances Canty, to step forward with the presentation. Once she gets settled, I'd like to invite the superintendent to offer opening remarks. We're, we're going to aim to keep the presentation under 20 minutes, and we'll now turn it over to the superintendent.
That's wonderful. And thank you to the transportation team, Dan and Jackie, for just continuing to push innovation and make our transportation safe, reliable, efficient. Thank you. So tonight, my team will give the district's annual hiring and workforce diversity update and report on our progress since last presentation to the school committee, which was a little more than a year ago, on November 1, 2023. I'm joined tonight by Chief of Human Resources Frances Canty and Rashawn Martin, Managing Director of Recruitment, Cultivation, and Diversity Programs, who will give the presentation and help to answer any of your questions. We are committed to hiring a workforce that reflects the students in this district and in the city we all serve. Diversity, equity, and inclusion continues to be at the forefront of our work. Tonight's report will include several things. An update on the district's workforce diversity and some of the trends we're seeing in the data. An update on our efforts to support a workforce that is representative of our students and families that we serve. How our efforts to expand our workforce language diversity is going. And the district's work on strategies to enhance hiring and retention practices. I'm, I'm very proud of the progress that we're making, but we know that we have more work to do. Our team will say that every day, right, in every area of our organization. Overall, the district's workforce diversity increased by a full percentage point from 56.5% in school year 2324 to 57. from 56.5% in school year 2324 to 57.5% in the current school year. And while the diversity of our GARRITY educators has remained stable at 42.1% educators of color, we saw a small increase in our Latinx educators from 12.1% in 2023 to 12.4% in 2024. This is, of course, all as of October 1st. As a reminder to those listening, GARRITY educators are those hired under the GARRITY court order that requires BPS to maintain a desegregated faculty and staff of teachers and guidance counselors. In addition, the district's are a 1.3% increase in GARRITY hires that self-reported fluency in one of 11 BPS languages in school year 202324. This is a four-point increase from 2022. So we really start to see the traction that we're getting in making sure that we're paying attention to fluency among educators. Educators are being hired earlier at the transformation schools, and we're closely monitoring the positive impact that that's having on teacher diversity and quality as well as on job vacancies. The team will also give an overview of the diversity of our 118 school leaders and our more than 2,000 paraprofessionals, as well as proposed changes designed to increase workforce diversity in the upcoming hiring season. So at this point, I'll turn it over to our team, to Chief Canty and Managing Director Martin.
Good evening, members of the... Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, just pull it closer.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, members of the school committee, Madam Chair. I am Frances J. Canty. Thank you. The proud chief of the Office of Human Resources for Boston Public Schools. And joining me is Rashawn Martin, Managing Director of Recruitment, Cultivation, and Diversity. We are grateful for the opportunity to share how BPS continues to commit to building a diverse and inclusive workforce that reflects the diversity of our students and our families. Throughout this annual report, we'll explore three key areas. Prematurely. Well, we explore three key areas. First, we'll review workforce diversity data and identify trends that show where we stand today. Next, we will highlight initiatives designed to promote inclusiveness and ensure representation within our workforce. And finally, we'll outline targeted strategies aimed at improving hiring practices and remaining talent. BPS is proud to be the leader in educator racial diversity across Massachusetts. We are home to 25% of all educators of color in the state. More specifically, 41% of the state Black educators, 18% of Latinx teachers, and 22% of Asian teachers. This number reflects the district's vital role in creating a diverse workforce. This data is on the state's, on DESI's, on report for the 2324 school year. This evening, you'll hear me speak about GARRITY educators. To provide context, the GARRITY rule establishes employment guidelines for specific roles, primarily teachers and guidance counselors, to ensure the teaching workforce reflects the diversity of our student body. It requires that at least 25% of teachers and guidance counselors are Black, with an additional 10% from other educators of color. What you are looking at is a snapshot of our GARRITY educators in the district. Over the past five years, we've seen a positive trend in the diversity of GARRITY educators. Despite challenges such as the pandemic and fiscal constraints, we've successfully maintained and even increased the representation of educators of color. While the number of Black educators slightly decreased due to retirement, resignation, and licensure challenges this year, we remain dedicated to advancing this workforce. We are happy to report that the district workforce has become more diverse, with more than 57% of them identifying as people of color, reflecting a 1% increase over the previous year. Non-GARRITY, school-budgeted staff make up a significant portion of our workforce. These represent the most diverse group of employees, with nearly 68% identifying as people of color. This category of employees are our paraprofessionals, our social workers, and our nurses. This highlights our success in building diverse teams at the school level. Central offices notably diverse, with 60% identifying as people of color. This underscores the district's focus on inclusive leadership and representation in administrative role. 70% of the superintendent's cabinet are also people of color. BPS is proud of its diverse and experienced school leadership team. This year, we have 118 school leaders serving our students. Of these leaders, 66 identify as people of color, 40 are fluent in at least one of BPS official language, and 41 hold advanced degrees. Additionally, 27 of our leaders have dedicated over a decade of service to BPS. We should be extremely proud of that. BPS greatly values the 2,155 paraprofessionals who are currently supporting our students in schools. Of these, nearly 1,600 identify as people of color, and more than 50% are fluent in at least one of BPS official languages. We are incredibly proud of the 25 paraprofessionals currently enrolled in our teacher pipeline programs actively pursuing teaching careers. On average, this experienced team has served BPS for more than 90 years, demonstrating their lasting impact on our schools and communities. The following three slides focus on our collaboration with the transformation schools and teams, the transformation in schools team, to support schools needing significant improvement. We are extremely proud of the work we did with the transformation school this year, and that is why it's very important to us that we highlight this. Transformation schools face unique challenges, particularly in hiring. To address these challenges this year, we accelerate the hiring timeline for the 2425 school year, posting vacancies for transformation schools two weeks earlier than non-transformation schools. This adjustment allowed us to better meet the needs of these schools by attracting a larger pool of diverse and highly qualified candidates. By prioritizing transformation schools, the district achieved measurable progress in increasing diversity among the educator workforce in these schools. Throughout the hiring season, these schools consistently hired at a higher percentage of GARRITY educators of color compared to non-transformation schools, particularly during the early hiring months. This data highlights how early hiring efforts have been instrumental in advancing workforce diversity in our most challenging schools. This slide illustrates our progress in addressing vacancies in specific schools. At the start of the 2425 school year, 93% of GARRITY position in these schools were filled, an improvement from 89% the previous year. As the chart demonstrates, we've significantly reduced the number of the start-of-school vacancies across transformation schools. This success again reflects the impact of accelerating our hiring timeline and our focus on prioritizing the needs of these schools. By continuing these efforts, we can further support these schools and ensure stability for our students and our staff. Linguistic diversity is a critical priority of BPS because it directly impacts our ability to meet the needs of our students and families. A staff member who is fluent in one or more of our official languages enhances communication, builds trust, and strengthens relationship with families and communities, particularly in bilingual settings. The 2017 Language Opportunity for Our Kids Act reinforces this need by requiring us to hire more educators who are fluent in languages other than English and are also capable of teaching in students' primary languages. This year, we've seen an important, this year, we've taken an important step of introducing a self-reporting feature through our employee self-service, an online platform that allows employees to manage personal and employment-related information. Staff can now use this tool to update their language proficiency, providing valuable insight into the linguistic strength of our workforce. In the near future, we'll be analyzing the data and sharing our findings with you. Our efforts to increase linguistic diversity among GARRITY educators are showing strong meaningful results. This year, 677 educators reported fluency in a BPS language. As the superintendent stated, a 1.3 increase from last year and close to a 4% point gain since 2022. The variety of language spoken are Spanish, Haitian Creole, Mandarin, Portuguese, which demonstrate the rich linguistic resources within our workforce. This growth supports our mission to provide culturally and linguistically responsible education, ensuring students can connect with educators who understand their language and culture. While we understand we've made notable progress in building a strong and more diverse educator workforce, we recognize that we have not fully achieved our goals. To ensure the start of the 2526 school year strong and in working towards our meeting our GARRITY requirements, we'll be implementing three, we'll be implementing several key strategies. One primary focus that we want to go back to is the introduction of early contract. This initiative reintroduced commitment letters earlier in the hiring process, particularly for hard-to-fill positions such as ESL and special education. Another critical strategy is tailored licensure support. The licensure team has identified 118 priority schools within the highest number, with the highest number of waivers and emergency licensed educators. To date, we have conducted close to 140 onsite visits to ensure educators receive the support they need to meet licensure requirements. On the recruitment side, we aim to expand the early hiring pool by increasing the number of applicants from 337 to 400. This will be achieved through partnership with Diverse Educators Preparation Program. We are also vetting, we are also enhancing the vetting process to ensure candidates are fully prepared and ready to meet the needs of school teams earlier in the hiring process. And finally, we are reimagining our retention efforts in transforming how we approach recruitment, guided by feedback from the Council of Great City School and alignment with best practices. Among our efforts will be to launch a campaign to promote the teaching profession as a meaningful and impactful career choice. This campaign will highlight the vital role educators play in shaping students' lives and showcasing all that our district has to offer, including competitive salaries, comprehensive health benefits, and opportunity for professional growth. This campaign, we hope, will be part of, this campaign, we hope everyone will be part of it, including you, our school committee members. Your involvement in promoting this initiative will be key to our success. By prioritizing these initiatives, we aim to attract, retain a diverse and highly qualified workforce that will positively impact student learning. Thank you for your time. I hope I didn't talk too fast.
Thank you. I'll now open it up for members for questions.
Thank you so much for the update. A lot of progress in a lot of areas. I just had a couple of questions. Some of them will probably require like a follow-up if you don't have like the numbers in front of you. I think it's great to kind of showcase the increase in terms of personnel, folks of color, whatever, and all of that. I think for transparency, just given all the stories that we've heard today, not only how many have we hired, but what is the actual breakdown of salary, right? It's great to hire, keeping folks in the city, but just in terms of like, okay, we hired them, but this is what the salary looks like. I know some of them is, you know, standard, but just curious, like what that actually looks like. For the, I wanted to go on the linguistic, in terms of proficiency, right? If a staff speaks Kavert in Creole, how are you actually like looking at the proficiency when it's Kavert in Creole?
So two things. There's self-reporting. Self-reporting is like, for example, you speak, we don't, we don't, for people who are just saying that they speak Kavert in Creole, unfortunately, there is no, we don't like test for that specifically. But if, in fact, you are saying that, if we have a dual-language program where you are teaching Kavert in Creole, then we would have a proficiency test for that. So there's two, there's two things. There's, I'm proficient, but like, I'm proficient in Haitian Creole, but I can't teach someone in Haitian Creole.
So the proficiency only comes when we're talking about if we had a dual-language program, that would play a part. So in the event that we have a dual-language program, and that's come up in some conversations as we're discussing that particular program, how are we gonna do that? And one of the suggestions in the room is that we shouldn't reinvent the wheel. You know, DESI already has some guidelines there, so if we need to translate and trans-adapt, let's do that. So just putting a suggestion there, but it just trigger, because I can understand the proficiency needs to be when it comes to educators, but I actually like think it should be in every position because just because I can speak Kavert in Creole, it doesn't mean that at Welcome Center, I'm, you know what I mean? Like, it's just something that we should think of, not only for Kavert in Creole, but any of the other languages. But yeah, so what I would really like, just for follow-up, if it's via email, a memo, the breakdown of salaries for all this progress that we've done. And I would love to be part of any conversation, in the event that we have a dual-language program specifically in Kavert in Creole, how we're gonna make sure that we're hiring folks and how we're educating the community and folks that are interested in being in hiring these positions, that there's a clear, like, if you, if you need to showcase proficiency, this is where you go. Because we want to do that community engagement as well. But thank you so much.
We will certainly keep you in mind when we're for the proficiency and helping in the dual language as well.
I might be asking an obvious question, but what are the reasons that we're not necessarily seeing greater numbers on the external, from external candidates as compared to internal candidates? So if I'm looking at the appendix correctly, across all educator of color demographics, what we seem to be struggling with is sort of bringing in external hires. What are the, at least from your documentation, what's the biggest challenge in that for educators of color?
One of our biggest challenges is licensure. Licenseure has proven to be extremely difficult for our educators of color to pass. One of the things that we would love for you guys to advocate for us, on behalf of us, is talking to DESI about the prospect of like, there are other ways to become licensed that doesn't have to necessarily be a test. Like, there are other pathways to becoming licensed, and that is, that is something that we've, you know, we've talked about, we've advocated on behalf of. We haven't made much leeway on that, but licensure has proven to be one of our biggest barriers.
And there was a pilot that was done, I believe, I think it was with UMass, but the challenge was just only educators enrolled in UMass, where they could then do like almost like a portfolio to be able to show proficiency as opposed to sitting for the exam. We want to see if there's alternatives to the test because we find that the test, and particularly for MLE, for anybody whose English is a second language, it is much harder to pass the test. I think that Director Martin has done a lot to support MTEL and MTEL Prep and really help educators be aware of all the supports we have. And because of that, we've actually had a lot of our internal candidates who are already here take advantage of that. But when they're external, they're not programmed to be able to do that. So I think it's going to be working with DESI, it's working with our pipeline programs for that.
And if I could just add some context for you, Dr. Hawkins, in terms of the internal candidates. You know, it's teacher conversion, right? So you're looking at Paris who became teachers. And you're looking at our provisional staff that we worked hard to retain, you know, those who were in their first, second, and third year, you know, here in the district. Now, that 63% is not nearly as high as I need it to be, but we need to, you know, but we need to keep our young educators around, you know what I mean, to get them to permanent status. And then there are subs, you know, that, you know, that we're supporting through our programs to also have them become, you know, become teachers. So there is a significant investment on the district to take the people that, you know, that are currently employed, who want to become educators. who want to become educators and make sure they become, you know, um, uh, you know, make sure they become educators.
And is licensure also the biggest barrier to non-renewal?
Yes, it is.
It's also very much so on the vocational CTE side. This is another area that we keep trying to work with Desi, but, um, it creates a revolving door in Madison Park, um, because it's, they've actually increased the rigor of the test. Uh, and so we just, we find that our educators can in the one year, especially if they're industry changers and they're going into education, like they, they don't have the academic skill of the test. They have the vocational CTE side. So it remains a problem. We've raised it with Desi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Gracias. Thank you for the presentation. Tomando en cuenta todo esto que estamos pensando de inclusión, de salones inclusivos, para los, específicamente para los estudiantes multilingües.
So looking broadly at all the information, we're talking about the inclusion, we're talking about different initiatives of the multilingual students and considering this.
Me pueden hablar un poco más de cuánto específicamente es la proyección que tienen para contratar más maestros que sean bilingües verdaderamente, que puedan decirnos esta noche, tenemos un timeline de contratar tantos maestros bilingües.
If you could provide a timeline, a projection, and how are you going to quantify how many bilingual students are we going to have? If you can elaborate on that projection a little bit, that would be beneficial.
She wants to know the projection of bilingual educators or bilingual teachers that we would essentially have?
Educadores bilingües, no, educadores bilingües. Tomando en cuenta que estamos hablando de un plan de inclusión, verdad? Entonces, tomando en cuenta que hemos dicho que la alfabetización, el idioma nativo va a ser prioridad.
Bilingual educators is specifically what I'm talking about. We're talking about the inclusion plan, and we're talking about the hiring of bilingual personnel will be a priority. So I'm talking about the bilingual educators specifically.
Yes, as we, as we do more inclusive education, um, we do project that we're going to need more bilingual educators. And we are actually develop, developing a pipeline to make sure that we can produce those educators. Um, we, the district received a six-million-dollar grant from the Department of Education to do that training specifically, um, for bilingual educators. We have a pipeline program right now that we started where we are taking, um, our paraprofessionals, um, and we, we're partnering with, um, one of our organizations so that we can expand those, those needs as they become available.
I would, um, I would also add that in the nine, in the eight, hope to be nine programs that have been approved for bilingual, dual-language, uh, and then the SEI plus, uh, that's where we'll be increasing over the next several years, uh, our demand for bilingual educators. So this will be a population that's going to grow. I think to Chief Canty's point, putting the pipeline in place now. And I also think working with the communities, like, uh, to, um, to Ms. Lima Barbosa's point, you know, as we work with the Kavertian community to help recruit from within the community so that we can find, uh, folks that want to be educators and are bilingual already. So, uh, we're going to be working hand-in-hand with the community on this.
Sí, porque es bien importante poder, si nosotros tenemos un plan, verdad? Poder decir en el plan, para este plan vamos a contratar tantos maestros bilingües que verdaderamente sean bilingües.
So it is important to have a plan, a specific plan that will allow us to say, we are going to hire this amount of bilingual educators that are really bilingual to be able to trace that on a specific plan. That is very important.
Yes, and we, we agree with you. Again, that's why we have these pipelines that we are developing. They are truly bilingual educators that are going through these, um, these programs so that we can make sure that they have the skill sets when they're ready, after we've trained them. We're doing a residency program where they will be with, um, at some of our partner schools that are in the district that are dual ling- um, language schools, where these individuals will do a one-year residency when they're ready to be educate, after they're ready to be, after they've finished, completed those programs, then we will work with them to becoming educators. So we have a plan in place that we have actually been working on for the last two, it's gone on a year now since we've gotten this grant to make sure that we can increase that pipeline.
Lo, lo último que quiero decir, que quiero felicitar a Rochelle, el departamento. Ellos hacen un trabajo increíble, preparando para, para profesional. Y creo que muchas veces esto no se sabe y es importante que la población sepa que ustedes hacen un trabajo magnífico preparando a personas que quieran ser para profesionales. Y yo creo que eso es importante decirlo también.
So it is very, first of all, I would like to congratulate the team, the team work, because you do an exceptional work and congratulations for that. It is important to know as well that you are doing an incredible job in preparing the paraprofessionals and providing the training that is necessary, that is very critical as well. And I would like to commend you for what you're doing.
Y yo le exhorto a que este tipo de programas que ustedes tienen tengan mucho más promoción, porque tenemos padres voluntarios que trabajan en la escuela, que pueden hacer un mayor aprovechamiento a estos. Son padres que muchas veces son bilingües o hablan español y pueden aprovechar bastante. Pero muchos no lo saben porque a veces la promoción no llega.
So I will encourage you to make this a little more publicly, because we have a, a population of parents sometimes, of volunteers at schools that could be active in this regard, it provides some work. But the lack of knowledge in this particular regard prevents them from actively participating. So it could be, they could be very proactive in this and participate and help in the process.
And thank you for mentioning that. That is, that is one thing I talked to my team about. We do such great work, and that is one thing we are working on and publicizing a lot of the marketing, um, the marketing of the work that we do, especially these programs, these pipeline programs that we have. That is, that is on our bucket list of this year. One thing that we are working on is the publicizing of these, of these amazing things that the district have that's available for the community and our families.
Muchas gracias, muchas gracias, de verdad, por lo que están haciendo. Y vuelvo y repito, es importante que las personas sepan, porque estas cosas a veces no se promocionan, y es importante que sepan qué el distrito está haciendo para empujar más para profesional.
It is very, very critical that this type of work, the incredible work that you're doing is promoted, that people are aware of what we're doing, that people know what the district is doing. And once again, I would like to congratulate and commend for the excellent job that you're doing in this regard.
Well, thank you so much for that. And I'll just add, um, yeah, in addition to increasing our, you know, capacity to, you know, advertise our, our programs, you know, we're also continuing to be or seek to be in the spaces where our community is. You know, we certainly have visited St. Stevens, you know, many times, and will come anytime that we're, uh, that we're invited. Um, and we plan to also be at the BPS showcase, you know, because we know a lot of our parents, as they're coming to visit all of the schools, can also stop by the ICD table and, and get information about, um, about the, you know, the programs that they can also participate in if they're interested in, in, in joining the district.
Yeah, thank you.
So one of the things that I'm curious about, because historically, um, we have had relationships with programs like Boston Teacher Residency. And so I'm very curious as to now what colleges and universities in the area are particularly doing, or any collaborations that, new collaborations that might be on deck or anything like that, that we can hope to see, or maybe things that we can think to foster in the future. Um, we're, obviously, we're in a wealth of educational capital of the world, like practically, and so, um, how are we taking advantage of that?
Yeah, so I can speak to that. So, um, we have a, a nu- a, a number of, um, so the two things. So the, you know, degree completion partners, you know, of all of our local higher ed colleges and universities, um, you know, from BU and Northeastern, you know, to as far as Merrimack, you know, who are assisting our staff, you know, and getting the credentials that they need and offering, you know, significant discounts and scholarships for our employees. And at the same time, we're also, uh, using, uh, them as a resource, you know, to directly send us, you know, the candidates that they have in their educator preparation programs. You know, we were just at Emmanuel, um, at Emmanuel College today, you know, talking to all of their, um, all of their students. Um, we're, uh, we're going to Harvard tomorrow. Uh, um, they're hosting a huge, well, they're doing it virtually, but we're participating, you know, in there, um, uh, which I think they're actually touting as a national career fair, because, you know, Harvard has big, uh, has big reach. And then in terms of our ed prep partners, you know, we are, um, we are partnering with them, uh, directly, meaning like the Boston Teachers Residency, the, um, uh, the Teach Next Year Program at UMass Boston, the Donovan's Program up at, um, up, um, up at BC, um, to be sure that we, um, you know, we always had relationships with them, but we know that they need to be tighter, and we know that we need to be more connected with the candidates that they currently have in the program. So we have already actually been given access, you know, to the candidates that they are currently cultivating. And so we're going to do our due diligence to make sure that, you know, everybody applies, you know, to our, to our early hiring pool and gets cultivated and is ready to be, to be seen, um, you know, by our school leaders, you know, that they get to Demo Day, you know, all those types of, uh, you know, all those types of things.
I also think, um, I also think Rochelle and the team, you know, has, have done a good job at, uh, what we call the pre-service, which is getting, uh, social workers, like folks starting to be a social worker, uh, and doing those partnerships with Simmons or with BC, and then reaching out to them as they're working in our schools when it comes time for them to graduate, to make sure that, you know, we're, we're offering BPS as their first choice. And part of them spending time in our schools is falling in love with our kids and our schools, uh, so that they'll want to do that. And there's several schools that are actually, uh, Willlock BU, right, is, uh, just comes to mind. BC with Messina College is a two-year program for our students. We actually have forty of our students from the city there, and it's a two-year for education. So that's like another example where we can go back to our own kids, right? Because we always say our own kids are actually our best pipeline, um, as a, as a way. So I just, I applaud the team because I think they're being super creative and thinking on all avenues of, of how to be able to improve.
Yeah, so we'll, and I, we'll send you the whole list of all the schools that we have agreements with, because I think the agreement is important, because then I know that they're specifically looking out for us, you know? Um, and then just as an example, um, when you asked a question about what may be new, you know, we just, you know, we just, we, uh, we just renegotiated with, with BC and the Wood School of Advanced Studies, you know, to actually increase their tuition discount for our BPS employees. So that should be, um, coming, which I'm thrilled about. And I have Leslie, and I have Leslie College on deck, who I just spoke to maybe last week.
Just to add to that conversation, can you clarify if the pipeline programs that we've been referring to, is it only for staff? Or do you have any pipelines that are like for senior? Okay, so, a suggestion. And I'm sure you know about this, because, uh, I know you've, you're in partnership with DUET as well. But I just wanted to highlight that in my time there, having conversations with our seniors that unfortunately their GPA was low, their SAT scores were low, um, free community college. There's a lot of barriers for them to even really get to that. Um, if you're seventeen, eighteen-year-old, you just graduated from BPS. Um, and this is coming from someone that graduated from BPS and has a hundred-thousand-dollar worth of student debt. I speak about it publicly everywhere, so I'm not afraid of saying that. But when you think about programs like DUET, which is project-based, because we just spoke about, uh, black, you know, our black staff or educators aren't able to pass licensures. So let's talk about our upperclassmen that are grad, you know, they're about to graduate, and they have all these issues with accessing schools like BU or Leslie or whatever that is. So I am a huge promoter of DUET, not to be biased, but because of how accessible and affordable it is, and it's super accelerated, where a student can get their bachelor's degree in two terms for twenty-six-hundred dollars. Or if they're eligible for Pell Grant, they're not paying a penny, because it's project-based. So thinking about those students that they're, they learn differently. It's not with standardized testing, it's not with exams, it's not with writing, you know, multiple pages of essays. But that is one audience, even when I was working there, I was like, we need to talk to the students that feel like college is not for them, because there's another way now, a very unique way of you getting your degree. Especially Massachusetts, where you do not, it's not required for you to have a bachelor's in education. So if you're twenty years old, you got your bachelor's degree, now you just got to worry about getting the licensures and everything else. So I'm very much interested in how we can make that work, because we're talking about staff. But I'm like, yeah, but we have a lot of students that love to be teachers, especially our students that are representing the communities that we constantly talk about. So that is one suggestion, happy to sit at the table, uh, to make that happen. But I think we should look into institutions, not just DUET, but that offer a different learning style or module to earn that whatever certificate degree for positions, not only as educators, but just overall, uh, for any other positions in this district.
Uh, let me just respond to that real quick, Santal. So, yes, because in fact, you know, DUET is really one of my leading, you know, or our, you know, leading, you know, uh, you know, bachelor's completion partners. And partly because we know that you just need a bachelor's degree, right, to get started, as opposed to, you know, necessarily wanting an education. And I think they've actually helped me push to nego- to be able to negotiate with some of the other colleges who have bachelor's completion programs because of the popularity of the, of the DUET program. And a lot of our central office staff have gone to DUET, which is, which, which is great, because, you know, I have central office colleagues who are looking to complete their degrees so they can, you know, so they can do other opportunities, uh, here in the district. And, and I've been thrilled to go to SNHU and watch all the DUET, you know, staff colleagues, you know, go, you know, go across the stage. And I will just ask is that we also just this week, now that the list there is official, have, have looked at the, um, at the free, uh, community college program and that whole list, and we're going to be sort of, you know, vetting that and taking a look to see which of the institutions, you know, can, you know, could strategically help us, in terms of, you know, getting, you know, getting some non, you know, some non-traditional pipelines, you know, uh, you know, pipelines going. And we want to take advantage of, you know, of, of that group of, that group of schools too.
It's definitely a program that works for working adults, but it works for students that do not have the money to go to the traditional institutions or that get paid by all these loans. And then you're stuck, you can't afford to live here. So thank you for all the work that you've already been doing there with dual enrollment as well. I think that's a good way, but I just wanted to highlight that in partnership.
So thank you. Um, appreciate the presentation and all the work you're doing on this topic. I, I find it fascinating on a night that this room was absolutely filled with teachers, right? And it's a great opportunity for us to hear from them. And yes, the numbers, we're talking about inclusion, and they were talking about pay for Paris, and they were talking about, um, pay for teachers as well. But we also heard some other issues, and, and I'm bringing this up in the context of thinking about retention, right? Retention is so important, and I know you're focusing on it. We heard about safety in classrooms and concerns about that. We heard about professional development. And I know this is all part of the contract as well, but I just wanted to make sure to give voice to that. When I think about retention as well, I know a big piece is a commitment on our part that every employee is entitled to a good evaluation, right? Everyone needs to know each year, what are three things you're doing right? What are your areas for improvement? How can we help you with it? And if you don't improve, then, you know, things need to change. And, and I know the district has made a commitment to that, and it's not part of this presentation, but I just, I wanted to make sure to give voice to how important that is, particularly at every level. So not just our teachers, but our school leaders, our district staff, our regional superintendents, the superintendent's direct report, we do the evaluation of the superintendent. We talked as a committee how to do a self-evaluation ourselves, so everyone's entitled to that. But I think that's an important piece of retention as well. What I did want to ask about is, and some of my fellow colleagues have gone into it as well, is about the pipeline programs, because the more we have, the better. And I was also going to follow up about, because we had a particular program for students who may be interested in going in. Teacher cadet, right? How is that going?
We still have it.
We still have it. So we actually now, in collaboration with the, um, with the Center for Collaborative Education, um, have transitioned the program, uh, to pilot it as a, as a high school pathway program. So right now, um, we're, uh, we're piloting it at, um, at Brighton High School and, um, where the idea, where we have students there who self-selected to, uh, to take basically a, you know, um, a teacher-apprentice elective, you know, and they're working, um, with some members of the CCE who were there at the school, uh, a member of my own staff who's, you know, who's, um, who was a part of the, who was actually an alum of the teacher, of the teacher cadet program. And we're really thinking of, um, on one hand, around workforce development, right? You know, for, you know, um, for our high school kids, right? With, uh, with the goal of then also having them understand, well, you know, I mean, what does it, uh, you know, what is the of then also having them understand, well, you know, I mean, what does it, you know, what is the life of being an educator? And also what are the steps to become an educator and the things that you can do now, you know, as a junior and, you know, and a senior, you know, to get yourself on the road. So we're thrilled. I mean, I think there are about, you know, there are about twenty to, you know, twenty-five kids who are in the, who are in the class and we look forward to hopefully able to grow. And, you know, I mean, for all intents purposes, if it works, right? Because we know that, you know, and we're going to commit it to make it work. Because you know how we feel about high school pathways, you know, around this district, you know, we would be looking to try to replicate it and expand it into, into other high schools in the district, you know, who would like to, who would like to offer that, you know, as one of their programs.
Yeah, those of us that have been around a long time, remember Teach Boston, right? And Teach Boston was just that, it was a pathway program in the high schools. And, you know, that certainly produced an interest in students that as they went on to their undergraduate, would go on and explore, further explore education. So it was not binding, but the, you know, that idea. Certainly in C T in Madison, it's like another place as C T vocational. The big focus has been early ed, so that's where you'll hear about the pipeline, you know, the, the Voc C T kinds of programs. But it'll be really interesting to see, like, we were, well, when we went to the Perry today, the governor actually asked the question, like, how many of you are thinking about being a teacher? And there were like probably like fifteen kids that raised their hand, right, out of it. And so, you know, it, it, I mean, there weren't a lot wanting to be governor, mayor or superintendent. So, but I think, you know, we, we definitely with our kids, if we expose them early enough and like give them those opportunities, just like paraprofessionals, we can create our own internal pipelines.
It's interesting. I, I read through a bunch of these postcards that the B T U folks dropped off and one of them mentioned came from Teach Boston.
Yeah.
Yeah. Three quick numbers jumped out at me looking at this profession, so, at this presentation. So I just want to ask this one question, then I'll stop. Twenty-one fifty-five paraprofessionals. We heard a lot tonight about paraprofessionals struggling financially, many who have been with the district for a while, looking for a path up. I see last year, when you talk about internal hires, sixty-nine paraprofessionals now hired as teachers. And I see twenty-five enrolled in a teacher pipeline program. I would have expected that number would be higher. Paraprofessionals enrolled in a teacher pipeline program. Isn't that a natural pathway?
Well, it's, yes, but, you know, it's, it's happens to be the number of Paris who are interested in doing that specific program. And, and many of them are also the bilingual educator powers, you know, that we're trying to feed and, you know, you know, through the, the long game of our, of our pipeline development. You know, I'm, I'm big on, I'm big on options, right? And so, and so when we hear from our powers in terms of expressing interest in becoming a licensed educator, well, we tell them, okay, well, you can do this program or you can do, you know, this, this program or this program or this program, but they're all partnered and supported by the district, right? So, so let's find out, you mean, you know, what pace you want to go at, right? Because that, that, the, the one that has the twenty-five, it's an accelerated, you know, community to teacher program. So, I mean, so, so, so we're getting these people coached up and licensed and prepared in a very short order, right? Like in, you know, in a year, basically. And so, and so you might have people who, who might decide they want to do a two-year program or they want to do an extended, you know, an extended program.
But we do have a coordinated way to provide a pathway for our Paris who are interested.
Oh, yes, absolutely. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And, and we agree with you. We, this is one of the things that we are working on. We want to increase the numbers of these programs. That's why we're doing several programs at the same time to make sure that we can increase that number. It, it, having a homegrown program is important to us. Actually, B P S is known for creating these great pipeline programs. So this is a concerted effort that we want to make, we're, we're putting a lot of effort and time into in increasing those numbers because we, we agree with you that those numbers need to be higher and those, and those are efforts that we're putting, putting stock into to make sure that happens.
Excellent. Great. Thank you. Thank you.
And then last thing I was, that Michael, just like with our students, we are, we are conscious of, you know, sort of a class size, right, and cohort side. It's because we're talking about, you know, instructional coaching, licensure support. And so, and so, and so a program in a given cohort in a single year, it looks different if there's seventy-five people in it versus, you know, let's say thirty-five in terms of, you know, what are the type of supports that we can give you, you know, to help you, you know, get to where we need you to be.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Couple of questions. The thing that always sticks out to me is the issue around the guarantee rule. Guarantee rule is fifty years ago, basically, but we still hold on to those percentages, but we are a very different looking district in terms of who we are serving, particularly students who are not Black, but we need teachers who are Asian and Latinx, et cetera. How do we hold ourselves to a more updated view of what our teaching workforce needs to look like as it reflects our student body? And how do we hold schools and ourselves accountable? I mean, what is our goal in terms of, you know, if we, we have the ideal teaching population, what would that look like? And then how do we strive to get there?
So, yes, our, the demographics of Boston looks different than it used to look fifty years ago. And we recognize that. That is, we, we understand majority of our students have now become Latinx. And as you can see, we have been, there has been a push on our, on our behalf to like get more Latinx educators into the classrooms as well. So as the demographics change, we are putting stock into that. We're putting efforts and making sure that, that, that it is a reflection of the student body. We, we understand it's, it's hard work. It's, it requires a lot of planning on our part and we're doing some of that planning so that it can reflect the demographics as it changes.
Are we able to, I mean, I would say do creative hiring, et cetera, particularly when I'm thinking about language issues or particularly, you know, high school Spanish-speaking chemistry teacher, you know, things that may not be in our general pool. How can we go outside of traditional hiring practices to recruit out of the country, to get a part-time professor from, you know, Harvard to come teach? I mean, you know, what other ways can we meet student need by getting the high-quality educators with the skills they have?
That's, that's a great, that's a great thing you mentioned because I've been doing some, some historical analysis of B P S and what we've used to do. One of the things I found out is that for years, B P S actually used to recruit in Puerto Rico. And that is something that we are considering. How do we bring these educators back to the state, especially Puerto Rico is a, is a, is part of the United States. So we are exploring some of these things. These are things like you, I'm thinking about, how do I diversify this, this workforce for the long run? So we, those are, those things are not lost on us. We are thinking about how do we make this happen? What are some of the pathways to, to get to, to the workforce to make it look like the student body? So I want you to know that I am thinking about those things. I am talking to people who were here before, who have done this work, and how do we get back to that?
Have we written the job description differently? B P S today is not B P S ten years ago. We are significantly have many more multilingual learners and with inclusion moving forward, classroom teacher today is not teaching the kind of class. How do we help both our current teachers shift their mentalities around what a classroom may look like today and how do we recruit new students and work with the universities to help them help us develop? The educators who come in understanding they're going to have a range of, you know, students' needs within a classroom. I know years ago, when I was an early childhood educator, all of a sudden they decided our licensing should be early childhood special ed. Not so much that I would become a special ed teacher, but the issue is that we get to, we get to understand better the needs of children coming in to flag it so that we could get the supports to happen. So it was knowledge I needed, not that I was going to have to go and now be all things to all children. But it's that kind of issue of how do we make sure the knowledge base our educators have allows them to do better teaching of the actual children that we have?
Yeah, so those are complex questions, of course. As you know, there's a lot that goes into that. You know, the changing of a job description, you know, that, that's something that you and I both know that, that's complicated in so many ways to change a job description. Yes, and we, we recognize, that's why our teaching preparation programs are very important to us so that, you know, schools know what B P S is looking for. One of the things that we are thinking about with, and the way we hire and recruit is like working with our school leaders so we can build up strategic staffing, like what does, what does a school look, needs and what can we do as central to make sure that we bring those type of educators to the, to the classroom? So we are thinking about like, how does strategic staffing looks, look like? What are the schools, what are the school leaders that are seeing on the ground to inform us of the best practices that we can, we can employ in our hiring practice so that we can make sure the people we're bringing in are, are suitable and are, most importantly, ready to be in front of students? We, we wanna, we, we're thinking about these education, there's these teaching programs and what they can assist us with. We, building up those capacities, those are things that like, again, that we're thinking about. They, there are going to be a lot of work for the district because they're, they're not easy to navigate. It requires changing practices that are, that have, that are old and like people are not, people don't love change, as you know, and having people, getting people to understand that this is going to be hard, it is going to be hard work.
I mean, our, our goal here, as we say every meeting, is to improve student outcomes. The number one thing that we have to work with to improve student outcomes are our teachers, our staff. That's the critical issue. If they don't possess the skills, the language, the desire, the willingness for the changes, then we have no hope of changing student outcomes. And so when you say writing a new job description is difficult, I can't have a job description for a thirty-year-old classroom today and expect that things aren't gonna improve. And so when I hear teacher frustration, as we heard much tonight, about what isn't happening, just putting another teacher in the mix as another body without the right skills, partnerships, all of those things, is not going to improve our outcomes. So how do we talk to this massive group of humanity to say, what we're doing right now is not giving our kids what they need?
I hear you. It's not, you know, I hear you.
I mean, it's definitely a combination of, you know, developing, in, in investment in developing, time relative to planning and addressing the students that are in front of you. But it's also, you know, to your point, Chair, that the higher ed has a really critical role in this. And, you know, so we, we certainly, as we were preparing to do inclusion, for instance, and certainly now as we're ramping up with more bilingual and dual language, we're reaching out to our higher ed partners to be able to try to address where their growing need is and, you know, what, you know, what we can partner around. Because we have so many per capita higher ed in Boston, it's, it's one of our greatest assets. And so we have to really be leveraging that, you know. And if, if our teacher corps is not coming out in that first year with a sense of how to be able to do universal design, for instance, then that's not something they're going to learn on the fly. And so it's, you know, that, those are the, those are the kinds of conversations that we're trying to, trying to have with higher ed.
Thank you. Are there any other questions before you go? We look forward to having you come back or update us, particularly on what are your next steps as we look at this report and see where we are now. What will change for the fall? You know, where will you have to push hard? What schools might you have to push back out to get them to hire and support to keep? I always worry about teachers who come with great gusto and three years later, then all of a sudden they call you and say, guess what? The school leader decided to go in another direction and it didn't include me. And you're thinking, I thought we needed teachers of color. I thought we needed teachers who spoke languages, but somehow we are not supporting them from the day they get here so that they will be here in year four. And that's what our kids need. So, I mean, you know, we will rule the day when our teaching force looks like our student force and are all being successful. So thank you for continuing to fight the good fight.
We will continue the good fight.
Awesome job. And I would suggest that B P S staff head home.
Yes. Uh-huh. Yes, I appreciate my staff for sticking around.
Including the deputies.
Yeah, thank you.
Does she have, does the superintendent have to say it twice?
Ms. Parvics, do we have?
We have sixteen people signed up, but I'm not sure if everyone is here, so.
We're, we're going to return to public comment?
Yes.
We are.
I'm going to call out the names that we have in person, but.
Oh, okay.
David Lewis, Heidi Winston, Vicky Vale, Lauren O'Malley Singh, Venkatesh Halasani. Okay, so, no, yes. We will now transition to virtual testimonies. Please make sure you're signed into Zoom with the same name you used to sign up for public comment and be prepared to unmute yourself and turn on your camera when it's your turn to testify. Please raise your virtual hand when I call your name. So the next speakers would be Julie Holbrook, Mike Heischman, Nisa Harrison, Rosi Hoskin, and Hajmina Feroz Omid. Julie Holbrook is not in the meeting. Next speaker will be Mike Heischman.
This old man's fired. Mike Heischman, Dorchester Beja. Thank you, B T U, for your wonderful and powerful testimony. Harmful policies are often chosen because they are cheaper than providing additional funds for successful policies. Your practice of choosing inclusion done cheaply and poorly instead of inclusion done right is an accurate metaphor for other policies. This must change. Negotiations with the B T U and their common good proposals are providing you with many opportunities to improve teaching and learning. Recently, three suburban communities to our north went out on strike for over ten days. They stood up for their members and advocated for improvements in teaching conditions. The media always reminds the public that their actions were illegal and the judges levied heavy fines. I applaud the reunions for courageously defying an unjust law and the strong support that all of them received from their communities. Teaching conditions in our schools are substantially inferior to the other striking communities. Thus, the B T U has a far greater responsibility to fight for our children. The ineffective management of the B P S is harmful to many of our children. It is permissible and legal. Withholding your labor in order to pressure the system to be more effective and humane would be obedience to a higher authority. When I was a teacher in Chelsea, we went out. It was the right thing to do for ourselves and a gift of positive and powerful teaching movement for our children and community. Superintendent Skipper and B S C members, I urge you to do the right thing and embrace the opportunity to be just to our educators and improve teaching and learning conditions. If not, I urge the committee to support the B T U and for the unions to shut the system down.
Thank you, Mr. Heischman. Our next speaker, Nisa Harrison, is not in the meeting. Rosi Hoskin.
Thank you. I am a parent at the Samna Elementary.
I am a parent at the Sumner Elementary School in Roslendale, which will be merging with the Philbrick Elementary School and moving into the renovated Irving Building in September 2025. I and other parents from the Sumner have testified at school committee a number of times to request better engagement from BPS with our families as we navigate the merger process. We are very good at letting you know when we are not happy. And I wanted to let you know tonight that we are very happy to report that the Region 5 team has been very communicative with the Sumner and Philbrick family councils this fall. And I want to recognize them in the same forum in which we've made our complaints and that we would now like to appreciate them publicly. I would like to recognize Region 5 Superintendent Dr. Kristen Weeks and her team, including Catherine Carney, Anna Tabarez, Magali Sanchez, Manny Ramirez, Barry Kaufman, Catherine Santiago, and from Capital Planning, Del Stanislaus, and many others behind the scenes. Dr. Weeks and her team have been meeting with us regularly in a variety of forums, and we feel heard and respected. As a result, the parent community has been able to contribute to the school choice process by championing our school community as a great choice for families.
30 seconds.
There is still much more to do before the merger is successfully completed. Our staff at the Sumner and the Philbrick are anxious and they are burnt out. We want to retain as many of the wonderful teachers at our schools as possible, but doing this by having single teachers hold multiple licenses as we roll out inclusion and a dual language program, which is very exciting, is not the way to reduce burnout. I urge Dr. Skipper and the school committee to respond to the BTU's contract negotiations with the resources required. We look forward to continue.
Thank you. Next speaker is Hajmina Feroz Amed. And then, we are going to have a group of Spanish speakers that will need support. Maria Mejia, Maria Gomez, Paola Lugo, and Martha Arsu. Hajmina Feroz Amed. Please unmute yourself. Thank you.
Yep, hello. So, the, the process for the getting in exam schools and changing the tier for the neighborhood was very complicated and difficult for our family to understand. We rented an apartment over an liquor store and in a lower income part of Boston. And it makes no sense that our tier is the same as back there. Across the street was two, two tiers lower when a 60, 76 composite, 76 composite score was the low cutoff to receive a seat. And my daughter's score was 96.689, which was not enough score to receive a seat at the BLS. Our daughter also had a higher grade than our son, but my son got a seat at the BLS last year when the, when our, uh, street, when our neighborhood tier was six. And my son and my daughter, they are, they are both hardworking and smart. They should be able to attend at the same school. And the process didn't change so much. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next group of speakers will need Spanish support. Maria Mejia.
Buenas noches, señora Maria Mejia, pase al podio, por favor. Habilita su micrófono, le vamos a interpretar.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Maria Mejia.
Good evening, gentlemen, my name is Maria Mejia.
Vivo en Roxbury y mi hijo estudia en la escuela pública de Boston.
I live in Roxbury and my son goes to the Boston Public Schools.
En la escuela Blackstone.
At the Blackstone School.
Estoy aquí como madre.
I am here as a mother.
Porque he estado trabajando desde muy cerca con la demanda que presenta el nuevo contrato de maestro.
Because I've been very, working very closely with all the demands that represent the new agreement with the teachers agreement.
Por esta razón pienso que el comité escolar debe aprobar en su totalidad.
For this particular reason, I do believe that the school committees should approve in full, completely.
Las demandas que están pidiendo.
The demands that they are looking for.
Los maestros, padres, y estudiantes.
On the teacher's side, on the children's side, on the student's side.
También que el distrito contraté más personal especializado.
It is important that the district hires more specialized personnel.
Para ser uno a uno con los estudiantes.
To be able to work on a one-to-one customized type of education with the students.
Además, más personal que ayude para hacer una inclusión bien hecha.
Moreover, more personnel is needed to be able to do the inclusion in a proper manner, appropriately.
La unión de maestro no tan solo ha hecho reuniones con los maestros, sino también con los padres.
So, we have to point out as well that the BTU, the teachers' union, had different opinions, not only with the teachers, but with the parents as well.
Los estudiantes y miembros de la comunidad.
With the students as with, with members of the community itself.
Tengo la experiencia porque trabajo dentro de un salón de clase.
I speak from my own experience because I do have the privilege of working in a classroom.
De lo importante que es tener el personal capacitado y suficiente.
So, it is critical to have the specialized personnel, that the sufficient, the right amount of personnel and staff required.
Para cubrir estas altas necesidades.
To be able to satisfy all the high demands that we have.
En especial los estudiantes multilingües.
And in particular, we're talking about the multilingual students.
Que pueden recibir intrusiones en su idioma nativo.
So, they're able to receive the inclusion itself in their own, in native language.
Como madre de un hijo con un plan individual.
So, I'm speaking as well as a mother. I do have a son that has an individualized education plan.
Apoya la inclusión bien hecha, clara, y precisa.
I do support inclusion well done, inclusion that is clear, and inclusion that is precise in all its aspects.
Muchas gracias, buenas noches.
Thank you very much for the opportunity and good night, everybody.
Gracias, señora Mejia. Maria Gomez is not in the meeting. Next speaker is Paola Lugo.
Señora Paola Lugo, puede proceder? Señora Paola Lugo.
Sí, buenas noches, me escuchan.
Good evening, can you hear me? Sí, señora, puede comenzar, yo va pausando para la interpretación. Adelante.
Okay, segundo. Buenas noches, mi nombre es Paola Lugo. Vivo en Dorchester.
Paola Lugo, adelante.
Mi nombre es Paola Lugo, vivo en Dorchester.
My name is Paola Lugo, I live in Dorchester.
Soy madre de cuatro niños.
I am a mother of four children.
Tres de ellos asisten a la escuela Roger Clark Elementary.
Three of them, they go to the Roger Clark Elementary School.
Y el otro a la, a la, a la Margarita Muñiz.
And my other son goes to the Margarita Muñiz School.
Y estoy trabajando dentro de un salón como padre mentor.
And I have to point out as well that I am working inside of a classroom as a mentor parent.
Más que un testimonio, tengo una pregunta para ustedes.
More than a testimony, I do have a question for you.
Estoy a favor, 100% de la inclu, de la inclusión.
I have to say that I'm in favor 100% regarding the inclusion.
Y el apoyo es, en su totalidad.
And I do support that 100% completely, the inclusion, that is.
Ahora bien, a criterio de ustedes, yo les pregunto.
However, and based on your criteria, my question to you is.
A diferencia de otros distri, distritos de Massachusetts.
So, there is a difference in what we compare us without districts in Massachusetts.
Están las escue, están las escuelas públicas de Boston preparadas para la inclusión.
So, the question becomes, are BPS schools prepared for the inclusion itself?
Porque yo que estoy lidiando.
Because in particular, I am personally dealing with.
Con niños con necesidades especiales.
With children with special needs.
Veo que ellos no solo necesitan ser incluidos.
So, I see, based on my observations, is not only that they have to be included, but.
Sino también que necesitan.
But also they do need.
Que se les provee.
They need that, the proper, that is provided to them.
Las herramientas necesarias, tales como.
That it is very, it is required that they are, they get the proper tools such as.
30 segundos.
Tiene 30 segundos, señora.
Personal especializado.
Personalized staff.
Equipos, acceso adecuado a su lenguaje nativo.
Equipment, proper access to their native language.
Y otros recursos que permita obtener de nuestros hijos.
And other resources that will allow us to get from our kids.
Un buen resultado a futuro. Muchas gracias.
Very good results that translate into a brighter future. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next, our last Spanish speaker is Marta Arsu.
Marta Arsu, por favor, pase al micrófono, ya se le va a interpretar. Buenas tardes, ya puede seguir, señora. Buenas noches, perdón.
Buenas noches.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, buenas noches, uh, mi nombre es Marta Arsu.
Hi, good evening, my name is Marta.
Arsu.
Arsu.
Um, vivo en South End.
I live in the South End.
Soy madre de, de un estudiante que asiste en una escuela pública de Boston.
I am a mother of one of the students that attends the Boston Public School.
La cual es la Blackstone.
Which is the Blackstone.
Estoy aquí para apoyar el contrato.
I am here to support the contract.
De los maestros en relación.
With the teachers in relation.
A la contratación de maestros bilingües.
In regards of bilingual teachers.
Para una inclusión bien hecha.
Or a well-done inclusion.
Esto es un punto muy importante.
This is, this is a very important point.
Porque se trata de la inclusión.
Because it has to do with inclusion.
Que la inclusión es educar cada niño para mejorar.
Which inclusion is to educate for each child to improve.
Para ese servicio tenemos que tener recursos.
For that service, we need to have resources.
Necesarios.
That are necessary.
La importancia de nosotros como padres de familia.
The importance of us, of the parents of the family.
Sobre el contrato de maestros bilingües.
Over contracting bilingual teachers.
Es porque vemos muchos padres de familia.
Because there are many parents of families.
Que no hablamos inglés.
That does not speak English.
Y al tener un maestro que hable español.
And to have a teacher that speaks Spanish.
Se nos facilita mucho el poder comunicarnos con ellos.
It facilitates for us to communicate with them.
Acerca del desarrollo escolar y académico de nuestros hijos.
Which has to do with the development of academics in school of our children.
El tener maestros bilingües tendrá un impacto muy positivo.
Having bilingual teachers would have a very positive impact.
Yo apoyo a una inclusión bien hecha.
I support an inclusion that is well done.
Como dicen los maestros de las escuelas públicas. Muchas gracias.
Just like the teachers of the Boston Public Schools, I ask it for. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Our next speaker, Rosalinda Maidens, is not in the meeting. Suleika Soto, okay. Suleika Soto is not in the meeting either. Chair, that ends the public comment.
Great, thank you. Any new business?
No.
No? Right, that concludes our business for this evening. Our next hybrid school committee meeting will take place in person on Wednesday, December 18th, 6:00 PM at the Bowling Building. Is there a motion to end the meeting? Thank you, sir, a second. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.